All right, we're going to get started. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's the May 27, 2025 Lakeville Areas Schools School Board Meeting. If everyone would rise with me to state the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with roll call. Begin with my right.
Amber Cameron.
Paul Carbone.
I'm Matt Swanson.
Michael Baumann.
Carly Anderson.
Brian Thompson.
Director Baker said she was on the way on agenda additions. She had requested that we add a discussion item for the board to discuss possible additional board committees, and so I would move to add that as an agenda item under Section 6. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Director Carbone. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously, so I'll add that under 6E. Any other additions or adjustments to the agenda? Or if there are none, I would move to approve the agenda as drafted with the one addition that was just approved.
Some of them.
All right, seconded by Director Cameron. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it passes. On to the good news. Superintendent Baumann.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good news from Lakeville Area Schools. Lakeville Area Schools honors retirees and years of service milestones. Congratulations to all the incredible staff members celebrating retirement or years of service milestones with Lakeville Area Schools. Dedicated staff members have generously contributed their time, talent, and care into the lives of students, families, and colleagues throughout our district, and we are deeply appreciative and grateful for their impact and their years of commitment to Lakeville Area Schools. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We'll do something more formal here in a few days. Blazing Cats adapted softball team finished season third place at state. So a hearty congratulations to the Blazing Cats adapted softball team on finishing a successful season with third place at the 2025 Adapted Softball CI Tournament. The Blazing Cats competed in a close game against South Washington Thunderbolts on Saturday, May 17th, coming out on top with a score of nine to eight. The team includes student athletes from Lakeville Area Schools, from Farmington, and from Burnsville. Congratulations, Blazing Cats. Small -- okay. Yeah, we can do that. Small Wonders Preschool receives four-star Parent-Aware rating. Small Wonders Preschool was recently awarded a four-star rating, the highest rating possible from Minnesota's Parent-Aware Program, recognizing Small Wonders' commitment to providing high-quality early childhood education. The rating issued by the state's Quality Rating and Improvement System reflects Small Wonders' excellence in preparing children for kindergarten through research-based practices. It highlights Small Wonders' strong curriculum, trained educators, and nurturing environment that supports the academic and social-emotional growth of every student. Congratulations to Small Wonders Supervisor Amy Gallardi and the rest of the dedicated staff of the Small Wonders Preschool Program. Outstanding. And you could read more about the amazing things happening in our district at ISD194.org/news. Okay, next thing. It's my honor and my pleasure to introduce a special guest today for good news. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Carrie Pop, Lakeville Area Schools Education Minnesota Lakeville President.
Good evening, Chair Swanson, Member of the Board, Superintendent Baumann, and the Executive Cabinet Members. It's great to be here tonight. I am Carrie Pop, EML president. I'm here to welcome --
-- Board, our two EML Educator of Excellence Award winners. Both of these award winners were put into selection for Minnesota's Teacher of the Year Award. Our first winner is our elementary winner, Allison Thon. Allison is a first-grade teacher at Eastfield Elementary. Educators and coworkers speak very highly of Allison and her accomplishments. Allison embodies the highest quality of professional educator. She demonstrates a deep passion for teaching, which you feel the moment you walk into her classroom. Her colleagues say she consistently adapts her teaching methods to meet the needs of diverse learners in her classroom. Compassion and empathy are central to her approach, and she is able to understand the varied challenges students face, both academically and personally. She creates a supportive environment where every student feels valued and encouraged to participate. Allison approaches each day with a sense of purpose and positivity and is able to maintain control while fostering a warm and engaging environment. She uses structure, positive reinforcement, calm redirection, and personalized strategies to manage her classroom effectively, all while maintaining a sense of calm. She inspires her coworkers to be better personally and professionally every day. Congratulations, Allison, on being EML Educator of Excellence Award winner. Thank you so much. Got a big man beat. Our secondary award winner is John Gilmer. John is currently part of the Science Department of Lakeville South High School and an award-winning coach. John's colleagues are impressed with the ability to engage learners. He plans most amazing field trips immersed with our environmental and student-based focus. He has a creative way to build student interest in topics that might not traditionally be the most exciting. John provides many hands-on activities. John's survival unit is envied by many of his educators. His students need to build a survival kit, go onto the middle of the winter to start a fire, and survive a final exam. Beyond being an excellent educator, he is a top-performing coach. John is a State Coaches Association Hall of Fame member and has been named Coach of the Year many times. Congratulations, John, on being the EML Educator of the Excellence Award winner. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, congratulations. That's amazing. I'm really curious in that survival class and how -- what happens if you fail the final exam when you're out there in the winter? Onto public comment. This is a time where the Board opens up the floor for public comment. In order to participate, which we encourage, you have to sign up the Monday before the meeting where we're going to hold public comment. You can sign up on our website under the school board. There won't be any response from the Board members to any comments that are made. We ask that you refrain from sharing any personal information about anyone because this is publicized, and we want to be careful of data privacy. And then also refrain from publicly criticizing Board members or staff. If you want to do that, you can do so outside of a meeting. Email us or call us. There is only one individual that signed up today. We do allow for three minutes, but since there's only one, I guess we can be a little loose on that. But Kim Baker will show you the 30-second sign when it is almost time to wrap up. With that, I'll call up Amber Alexson.
Good evening, Chairperson, Board members, Superintendent Baumann, Cabinet members, and community members. My name is Amber Alexson. I am the parent of two Highview Elementary students, and I'm here tonight with others representing the Unite for 194. I'll let them introduce themselves.
I'm Amber Schmidt, and I have two kids at Cherryview Elementary, and I've been part of this committee for two and a half years.
Hi, I'm Jenny Youngworth. I have two kids at Impact Academy at Orchard Lake Elementary.
I'm Breana Eam, and I have one child at Highview and one at Small Wonders, soon to be Highview kindergarten.
Unite for 194 is a coalition of over 20 dedicated parents and community members who have come together in support of -- sorry, sorry -- in strong support of Lakeville Area Schools. Founded 10 years ago, our group carries forward the important work of its predecessors and continues to build on the legacy of advocacy and community engagement. Our mission is to foster a thriving educational environment by promoting excellence in public education, strengthening community relationships, encouraging open communication, and celebrating the achievements of our students and educators. We are committed to empowering and connecting all stakeholders, students, educators, families, and community members, around a shared goal of student success.
In 2015, our community approved both a capital levy and an operating levy. The capital levy made vital investments in school safety and security, expanded STEM opportunities, and enhanced various instructional programs. The operating levy supported critical programming, including elementary art and fifth-grade band, programs that enrich the educational experience and reflect our district's values. As these levies approach their 10-year expiration, important decisions lie ahead. The Board will soon determine how to proceed with renewing these measures and whether to return them to voters. Tonight, we respectfully ask the Board to exercise its authority to renew the operating levy for another 10 years. We also urge you to consider placing the renewal of the capital levy on the ballot this fall. These levies align with the educational priorities of Lakeville Area Schools and reflect the community's longstanding commitment to quality public education.
Unite for 194 will continue working to support our schools and students. We invite fellow parents and community members to join us in this effort. Our group meets regularly and offers updates and opportunities for involvement through both our website and our Facebook page. Together, we can continue connecting neighbors in support of Lakeville Area Schools. Let's build upon our tradition of student success and ensure that future generations have access to the same high-quality opportunities as those who came before them. Thank you for your time and your continued dedication to our students and schools.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comment. We'll move on to the consideration of the consent agenda. Any items that a Board member would like to remove for further discussion? Director Thompson.
I'd like to pull Item B, Employment Recommendations, Leave Requests, and Resignations.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? All right, with the removal of B, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items for A, C, D, and E.
So moved.
All right. There's a motion by Director Baker. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Being a first and a second, there's a motion pending to approve the consent agenda items for A, C, D, and E. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it is passed. Director Thompson, I'll turn it over to you for employment recommendation and leave request.
Thank you. I've got four items, so I don't know if yours is quick, Ms. Director Baker.
Yeah, I had a quick question on it too, so thanks for pulling that item. When I was looking through the employment recommendations, I noticed that there were several teachers that had been through probationary release and then rehired for the same position. So I'm curious as to the district's standpoint on that. Are we just letting go of all probationary staff and then having everybody re-interview for their job, or is there an opportunity for some probationary staff to stay on if we already know that we need them and we obviously feel like they fill that role? Like, I guess my question is, why would we let them go, and then what would be the process for interviewing again?
Ms. Albrecht.
I don't know the individuals specifically, but I can answer the question generally.
Yeah, it's just a general question. Like, is it the district's policy to just unilaterally let go of all probationary staff and then re-ala -- or like repost those positions because they're probationary, or are we looking at that as -- on a case-by-case basis and allowing a probationary staff to stay on?
Sure. We do not unilaterally non-renew our probationary staff. We will non-renew based on either performance or if we have a position available. Sometimes positions become available, and if that probationary staff was a high performer that we want to keep on, we will keep that person on. Sometimes it can be a licensing issue where we're waiting there on an OFP, out-of-field permission, and we're waiting for a license to come in. But to answer your question in basic terms, no, we do not non-renew all of our probationary. Depends on the circumstances.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Director Thompson.
I am not well versed with how this probationary process works. If you're on -- if you are a probationary teacher, and then you get hired back, does it allow that teacher to continue on with -- to get the tenure status?
Yes.
But so it doesn't -- there are no gaps for that individual?
Correct.
But if they choose not -- if they are no longer with us and move on, then they have to do the tenure process at their next employment?
Correct.
Okay.
My concern with that was just that if we're just unilaterally letting people go and not considering that, like, that position is still there, or, you know, some of the circumstances not being the circumstances that Brenda mentioned, that it impacts, like, staff morale, and then we risk losing that staff member to another district because they would then have the opportunity to go and interview somewhere else. And if it was someone that was really good and we wanted to keep them on, I just don't see a point in unilaterally letting probationary staff go. So thank you for answering that question.
Director Baker, do you see -- is there a part of this document that shows the non-renewal of probationary staff, or you just recognize some names from a --
It said by the name. There was some where it said "non-renewed" by the name, and then they were rehired. I want to say there was like five or six.
Okay.
You have to keep scrolling, but it was in parentheses by their name.
Okay. Director Thompson, you have some questions?
Yeah, probably none for you, or so you should be good. So I've got just a few observations. Number one, there was a employment recommendation for a Lakeville South Activities Director, so fantastic that we were able to find someone very quickly for that. So I think that's very good news. The one that -- the two that I had additional questions on was the Secondary Teaching and Learning Coordinator for 106,000. I just wanted to just better understand what this role would be doing. I know that we have a secondary director. How many secondary staff do we have, and what exactly is this role going to play in this?
That role currently replaces resignation. That you should also see on that for Stephanie Hicks, who is leaving us to go to Rosemont, Eagan Apple Valley, so that is her replacement.
Got it. Now, I believe Stephanie Hicks was leading our career in technology and chamber relations. Is the role that is going to be similar to that or the same?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And so the next question that I have -- probably not for you, so you're good. So thank you. Glad that we're hiring and have a backfill because I'm a big fan of the career and technology pathways. The second -- the third question that I have is this resource teacher. I didn't know what that -- what it was. I mean, I saw special education, and I see some staff coming in at a higher step range, which is reasonable based on our previous conversations of the market needs, but what is a resource teacher? Because we hired three of them.
So a resource teacher would just be -- it kind of talks about the setting that they would be providing services in. A program teacher would provide students -- or like a self-contained room, which we don't like to use that term, but would be for, like, setting three. So a resource teacher would serve students that are receiving special education services for 50% or less of their special education day, so setting one or two.
Got it.
So generally, they serve multiple grade levels and multiple needs.
Special education resources is what those are for. Okay. Thank you. And so the -- yeah. You're all good. I think where I get some -- and again, this might be for a broader conversation for another time, but I think where my confusion is that we're hiring three of these resources, and there seems to be three varying steps that they came in -- come in as. And so one is like an MA Step 12, one's an MA Step 13, and another one's an MA 60 Step 16. So when I look at it just from a budgetary -- budgetary perspective, we're paying one at 71, $73,000, and then another one that's paying -- that were -- the salaries, like $97,000 according to the salary grid. And so my question for maybe not you, but maybe for the district as a whole is, like, do we have -- is there a logic kind of format that we use to determine how we bring resources in and kind of what range or what step that they belong in? Or do we just -- we hire whoever is the best, and then whatever step that they are in, that's just what the budget that we will allocate towards that? So I guess I'm trying to better understand what the logic is, because we have to bring in three individuals. Is there a budget constraint that we follow? Is there a -- that's what I'm looking to better understand, because we're hiring three resources with varying degrees of where they are in the step, but if they're doing the same role, why is that the case?
So I'll just say I'm happy that we are able to get some special education resource teachers. But really, that salary range is going to be dependent on people's experience and educational background. So if we are able to hire, I will say, in particular, our special education teachers with experience, we can -- that only benefits the students that we're serving. I can't speak, though, to the specific salary ranges that people are offered.
So then if we're going to -- are the job postings set for, we are looking for these individuals with this level of experience? Or is the job posting set for, we're looking for any individual at any experience, we're going to just interview all of them, and then whoever the best candidate is, based on maybe some experience, we're going to go with that individual? Which is not a wrong answer. I'm just asking, because if we've got -- is there no budgetary component to this is what I'm asking for? Because if we're looking for three individuals, and they all -- and they all happen to be MA 60 Step 16, we ought to be allocating $97,000 per staff, whereas for -- if the budget is smaller, so that we can maximize our budget, because we only make so much money and we can only -- we only have so much revenue, how does that -- how does that work? And if you don't have the answer, that's fine. I guess I was curious.
I can give you a general answer. So best qualified based on a competitive process is the general mechanism. We have labor agreements that are negotiated and salary schedules that are driving some of that. The most difficult challenge is what I call low density, where you have not a large pool to choose from, and so you try to bring in the best qualified to interview. And typically, in public education, there's interview teams that work together and try to assess the best candidate for the job, given the knowledge of where they're going to be placed and what they're going to do. We are budget constrained, and we are trying to operate within parameters of a budget that typically each department knows what that is, and we try to operate within that to the extent that we can. If there's an exception scenario, that usually rises up and gets to me if there's a special decision that needs to be made with regard to that. So placement is typically a assessment that our Human Resources Department does, because there are labor laws that guide what we can and cannot do with regard to that, and we want to be faithful to that and accurate with that. That's generally the process, but the guiding -- the guidance that there -- everybody's operating under is best qualified, given the situation, and the -- there is a triage of applicants before you bring in people for interview. I think that's generally it.
And I appreciate that answer. And so I think where we -- where I -- where I'm coming from is that most organizations generally have a kind of a triangle salary structure or staffing structure. Those that are on the further top, you know, you've got a higher compensation, but there's generally less of those resources. And then, you know, as you go further down the ranks, you've got more that are on the lower end on the compensation schedule. But while I appreciate Lakeville as a whole wanting to have the best qualified staff, if you invert that triangle, you're going to have more resources at the higher end, which doesn't allow us to really maximize the funding that we have limitations on. And so while this may not be a discussion we need to have today, I just want to make sure that there's clarity and understanding, maybe for another meeting, to make sure that we are all aligned on what is the logic and the reasoning and the process as we look for staff to be a part of our school district.
I think -- I mean, the point you're trying to make is essentially two Step 16 teachers financially is equivalent of three Step 3 teachers or something like that.
I mean, a Step 1 teacher is $51,000. Step 16, MA 60, is $97. The middle point is 75. And what is -- what is -- how do we get there if we're not there?
Did you have a comment before? I had a question for Michelle, but go ahead.
Yeah, I feel like we've listened -- I don't know across many board meetings how there are clearly some positions that are much higher demand at this point or harder to fill. And so when we're talking about specialized school psychology, some of these positions that we're just not getting, if we're even getting enough applications for the availability or the positions we have open, it's like we're wanting to make sure that we hire people as opposed to pay for consulting services. That would be a lot more expensive if we don't fill those positions. So I would think in these higher or harder to fill, we're going to have more variability in the salary based on who's applying and who we're able to get. That would be my --
Director Baker.
I just have a quick comment on this, too. When you consider not only just a teacher's role, but a special education teacher's role, one of the things that we hear a lot is that there's a teacher shortage. In the state of Minnesota, we may have a teacher shortage, but we also have a large amount of teachers that have special education licensure that are not teaching. And there's a reason for that, because those positions are very stressful. There's a lot of work involved. There's additional paperwork. There's additional meetings. There's additional responsibilities that go beyond that. And for any teacher within, you know, that has a school contract, just to renew your license every five years, you have to go through 125 credit hours. Now, some of those credit hours are provided by the district, but many teachers pay out of pocket to get those CEUs to make sure that their license is renewed. I don't know how many other professions where you have to continually pay to be able to keep your job and continue to go back to school so that you can just remain hired. My husband's an engineer, and he hasn't been in school since he graduated, and he still makes double the amount of money that I make. So again, I continually have to go to school, like many other educators, and these positions are going to be continually more difficult to fill because of the role that teachers have to play and the licensure they have to maintain, and the fact that our pay doesn't match the work that we put into the job.
Director Carbone.
Yes, and I think, Director Thompson, I think the point you're trying to make is there's almost only so much money to go around, and if there's a $97,000 and a 61 and a 61 that are currently in the position, hiring three $97,000s, the math doesn't work. And Superintendent Baumann, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, is that if there are only three $97,000s available, then it needs special approval from the superintendent to find the money? Is that not what we're saying here?
Well, based on your example, the answer would be yes. However, comma, my answer is there's a balance that you have to strike here between what your financial requirements are and what the varying positions are and what you have to fill. Let's take special education for an example. Walking back into Lakeville Area Schools, we have a shortage of special education teachers, and there's a lot of reasons for that. So as a program, my goals are focused on recovering and getting our positions that are vacant filled the most efficient and effective way possible, which, again, is that balance that I think you have to strike. But on an individualized basis, everybody's working within a budgetary parameter. I don't think it's necessarily a free-for-all scenario, and our low-density requirements are going to have a priority because the needs also usually correspond with those kinds of positions. So they're going to be more demanding, more difficult to find and fill.
Director Cameron.
Sorry, getting the microphone working here. And Superintendent Baumann, jump in here if I'm misunderstanding things, please. I think for me, I want to be careful. I think if -- Brian, I agree with you that many organizations have a triangle-based model for staffing, right? I think if we looked at the collective of Lakeville Schools, we would find a very similar model. So I don't want to imply that we have a reverse model here. And I think the danger in looking at one hire and one sell, while it's good questions to ask, you have to look at this as a comprehensive -- to ask, you have to look at this as a comprehensive... The hiring for the district as a whole. So there's many that are hired also right now that are in that first lane, right, or early steps. And so once you average this all out, does it fit within the overall budgetary constraints that our district has? It should, and I hope it does. But I think it's important that we need to recognize that, yes, there might be some being hired at higher steps and lanes, but there are also many people who are being hired early on the salary schedule, and we're not talking about that part.
Thank you. We could keep talking about this, but maybe we should have it as a discussion item on another agenda. And then if there are no objections, I'd move to approve the employment recommendations and leave recommendations. It's moved by Director Anderson. I will second it. Being first and a second, all those in favor of approving the employment recommendations, leave requests, and resignations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I will take note because I know there are probably many more comments to be made and work with the superintendent to get that on a future agenda. Reports and discussion. State of the high schools updates. I'll invite up Elida Kane, Principal Kim Booty, Sean Murphy, and Margaret Gare.
Well, good evening, members of the board, Lakeville area school staff, and community guests. My name is Elida Kane, Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, and I'm joined by our high school principals, Kim Booty from Lakeville North, Sean Murphy from Lakeville South, and Margaret Gare, who is the principal for both Pathways Academy and our Lakeville Online Academy. Together, we're here to share the current state of our high schools, celebrate progress, and identify areas where we can continue to grow and support our students. When we think about high school today, it's not just about earning credits and graduating. It's about preparing students for an ever-evolving world. High school is about building a strong academic foundation, yes, but high school is also a time of exploration and opportunity for students to discover their passions, interests, and strengths through a variety of academic, extracurricular, and real-world experiences. By trying new things, reflecting on what excites and motivates them, and engaging in meaningful learning, students can begin to shape a clear sense of their own direction for their future. This period of self-discovery helps inform important decisions about careers, continued educational needs, and lifelong learning. And today, we'll share a little bit of all of that with you. The structure for our presentation is as follows on the screen. We will begin with some enrollment and demographic data to ground our discussion. Our principals will then take over to review some learning opportunities, academic data, and go over our enrichment programs. And they'll highlight the current systems of support in place for our students. And then lastly, to the right, you've seen this before, but this is our profile of graduate... graduate, excuse me. It outlines the essential knowledge, skills, and mindset that a student should possess by the time they leave us here in Lakeville. It serves as a north star for our instructional planning, student support, and long-term outcomes that we aim to have for our students when they leave us. These tenets will have an impact on them well beyond their lives and their academic So a little bit of data specifically about our high schools. This slide provides a snapshot of our combined high school enrollment and student demographics. We serve a diverse and growing population across our two traditional high schools, Pathways Academy and Lakeville Online Academy. The data points help shape our instruction, our resource allocation, and support our systems. It's essential that we respond to the evolving needs of our student body, both academically, socially, and emotionally. Some of the numbers on the screen, we have just under 4,000 students between all of our high schools. The pie graph there shows our district federal race by ethnicity. The bar graph to your right shows some of our varying group designations that we have, thinking about 504, special ed, homelessness, other open enrolled opportunities. And then at the bottom, just so some situational awareness that we have over 55 languages spoken between our students at the high school. So that's interesting to note. Okay. It's a lot, yeah. So this picture might look familiar to you. When we were here in the winter, we shared some snapshots of what some of our typical second and eighth grade classrooms look like. So let's explore a little bit of how this might data plays out slightly in our high schools. So here we have an average Algebra II course, which usually consists of 10th and 11th grade students, with Algebra II being considered on-grade level for 11th grade. As you can see, this shows the complexity of a single classroom. When we look at the numbers, it's not just about academic data. It's about the entire environment, where each student has unique needs and requires specific support. We want to emphasize here, like we did in the wintertime, that the outcomes can be directly tied to students' real-world experiences, and our educators are striving and committed every day to supporting all of the needs of our classrooms. Also, taking a peek at a English 10 course, which is considered foundational for sophomores, so kind of staying in that same age range. In this course, our educators monitor classroom-level performance data to ensure students are developing essential skills in reading, writing, communication, with a strong emphasis on discussion, textual analysis, and feedback. Again, this is a real dataset that illustrates the depth and complexity of the dynamics our students and teachers are engaging on the day-to-day. I want you to please note that every single high school teacher in any course, not just Algebra II or English 10 that you see here on the screen, will have five different, unique sets of data coming through their classroom throughout the day. Our teachers see roughly 175 students per day with varying needs and backgrounds. With that, I will turn it over to Kim Booty, who is going to talk about some... Our Program of Studies and other academic opportunities.
Good evening, everyone. Our Program of Studies is our complete high school course offering. It is reviewed and updated yearly. The process, along with updates and changes to the Program of Study, are brought forward publicly to our Teaching and Learning Advisory Council and then to you, our school board. We have over 200 courses that cross a wide range of curriculum and give our students a chance to learn future employable skills in multiple pathways for learning and also to meet their graduation requirements. With 25-plus AP courses, students have the opportunity to engage in as much rigorous course opportunity as they are ready for in a wide range of content areas. Other distinct offerings in our Program of Study include broad offerings in the STEM and manufacturing, online learning, and career pathways. There is many unique opportunities toward graduation as there are students in our buildings. The Program of Studies guides students, families, and counselors to design a personalized four-year plan that gives students unique experiences to explore their talents and skills, some they may know about and some they are just curious about. With the rapid advancement of technology, the job market and skills required to succeed are constantly evolving. It is crucial that we stay aligned with industry trends and provide our students with opportunities to explore diverse career pathways. By doing so, we ensure that they develop the necessary skills to remain competitive and prepared for the future workforce. In 2022, we introduced a Certified Nursing Assistant, a CNA program. Since then, the enrollment in the course has nearly doubled. This course serves a dual purpose, catering to students at different stages in their career exploration. For some, it provides an opportunity to assess whether this pathway aligns to their interests and long-term goals, and for others, already committed to this field. The course offers a more advanced level of instruction culminating in certification that enhances their qualification and supports their professional development. To date, 76 students have passed and received their CNA certification this year so far, and we are on track to surpass 100. In the Family and Consumer Science Department, students gain hands-on experience in both baking and cooking with advanced courses such as culinary arts available for those interested in pursuing careers in the food industry. Advanced students are eligible for SERVE Safe Certification. This past year, we had 120 tests for food handler certification and 14 tests for food manager certification. Our business program has seen significant growth from accounting to marketing. Students have had the chance to explore various facets of the business world to discover what truly sparks their interest. Our students work on marketing campaigns collaborating with local businesses to develop new ways to market their business. Our educators are dedicated to fostering the next generation of skilled workers and leaders. And of course, our STEM programming at the two high schools has expanded significantly over the past years. Students engage in engineering their future, which is a set of courses, to help them make the decision to go deeper into the areas of woods, metals, architecture, environmental sciences, and a medical pathway. Each pathway is complete with a capstone and potential internships. Finally, work-based learning has allowed students to complete elective credits while exploring career opportunities in the Lakeville community. Students not only have learned on-the-job skills, but have landed great jobs right out of high school. And now, I'd like to introduce Sean Murphy, Principal at South High School.
Good evening, members of the board, Charles Swanson, Superintendent Bowman. I'm pleased to present an overview of our students' academic performance and the remarkable opportunities available at our high schools. The data we're sharing tonight highlights not only student achievement, but also our school's commitment to preparing students for post-secondary success. As you can see on the chart, the average GPA of a Lakeville high school student is 3.271, and this reflects our strong overall academic performance across all grade levels. Most of our students are right around that B-plus average. Our AP program is thriving. Nearly 1,800 students are challenging themselves with college-level coursework, with 74% of AP test takers scoring a three or higher. A significant portion of our students are earning a free college credit before even graduating high school. Most colleges look for that three-year score of higher. Our post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO, offers motivated students the chance to take college classes while in high school. With over 350 students enrolled, this program continues to provide an important bridge to higher education for our Lakeville students. Also, our concurrent enrollment program allows students to earn college credits right here in our buildings. These classes are rigorous, aligned with college standards, and embedded into the school day, making college more accessible and attainable. Our teachers who lead these courses are accredited through our partnering colleges and universities. This collaboration ensures the curriculum meets high education standards while supporting students in a familiar learning environment. Finally, beyond the traditional academics, we are proud to support linguistic and cultural proficiencies through the Minnesota Bilingual and Multilingual SEALS Program. Students demonstrating high proficiency in the areas of listening, speaking, reading, and writing in a second language can also earn college credits while in high school. So in total, we have hundreds of students that are graduating our high schools with multiple college credits, many with an entire semester or more of college already completed. So these opportunities help families by reducing future student debt and opening doors to higher education for all students. So we're proud of all these college credit offerings and grateful to our dedicated staff and higher education partners. Another chart for you to look at, it's a snapshot of our class of 2024 and their plans after Lakeville High School. We collect this data each year from our senior survey that we administer in the spring. You can see roughly 76% of students last year were attending a four-year college, 6% military or job force, and then 18% of the two-year college route. All right. A key indicator of how well we are preparing our students for life beyond high school is their performance on the ACT exam. The ACT provides a nationally recognized measure of college readiness, and as you can see, our Lakeville students average 22.9. The state average is at 20.7, and the national average 19.4. Lakeville students are significantly outperforming both state and national averages, which is a high-quality education that we are providing them across our high school programs. Why does that matter? ACT benchmarks are designed to predict the college readiness. Lakeville students are exceeding college readiness benchmarks in all four areas, and these scores strongly suggest our graduates are well-positioned to succeed in college-level coursework and other post-secondary opportunities.
Back to Kim.
The academic experience is an important part of the high school experience, but we firmly believe that students should use high school as an opportunity to turn passions into professions. To truly meet the needs of all students and experience in academics and activities provides multiple areas of growth to develop these passions. Research strongly indicates that participating in school activities is linked to higher graduation rates and improved academic outcomes. Studies consistently show that students involved in extracurricular activities, including sports, clubs, and performing arts, are more likely to graduate from high school and to achieve higher GPAs and test scores. We believe strongly in the importance of giving students a chance to find their groove through activities, fairs, tabling in the lunchroom, and meeting times for some groups during student advisory to support participation. We truly believe that if we don't have a club a student is interested in, it's their job to start one. I'd like to now introduce Margaret Gare, who serves as a principal of Lakeville Online Academy and Lakeville Pathway Academy.
Good evening. Pathways is listed with the state as an area learning center. Pathways is an alternative learning environment for students who struggle with traditional school buildings. As such, we provide support for qualified students K-12. All students must qualify to participate in our program. All students have one or more qualifying codes. Linked in the slide, you'll find that there is a statute that gives you the list of qualifiers. Pathways High School also supports students who need to recover courses for their path for graduation. Targeted Services is a before-and-after-school program in all the buildings for students K-8 who have been identified as students who could use additional supports to achieve grade level in math and reading. Pathways is an inclusive program as it serves a broad range of students across the district. Highlights include: The full-time day high school program, we've served 93 students to date. Credit Recovery High School, in the summer, we have recovered 231 classes. Credit Recovery High School After School during the school year, we've recovered 149 classes. Targeted Services K-8, in our summer, we have served 600 students, and Targeted Services Before and After School, approximately 500. This is a breakdown... It's an illustration of how qualifiers represent our student population at Lakeville Pathways. Lakeville Online Academy is a high school, is a makeup of students from our district and open enrollment. We have provided service for 948 students to date. This is a breakdown of the current grade levels that have received at least one online class from Lakeville Online Academy. We currently have 404 Lakeville North high schools that we have shared. We have 12 Pathway students that we have shared with Lakeville Online Academy, and 361 Lakeville South students that we have shared with Lakeville Online Academy. Graph one is a breakdown of the full-time intra-district or open-enrolled students from our Lakeville Online Academy. The second graph is a breakdown of the full-time students and the grade levels that it represents. And next, we have Sean.
All right. And I'm going to highlight some of our key systems of support at the high school level that we have implemented in the last school year to help our students succeed at an even higher level. And I'm going to start with LINK Crew. So I'd like to take a moment to share kind of the impact that we've had with LINK Crew at our high schools. It's a transition peer mentoring program that plays a vital role in welcoming and supporting our incoming freshmen. We did introduce it to you earlier in the year, so you might remember that. We're still in that first year and kind of seeing the lasting impacts of it. So LINK Crew is designed to help freshmen feel welcome, supported, and prepared as they begin their high school journey. The program pairs incoming ninth graders with trained upperclassmen leaders who serve as mentors throughout the school year. Freshmen are introduced to LINK Crew on the first day of school, where they participate in a structured orientation led by our LINK Crew leaders. Activities include team-building exercises, campus tours, and small-group sessions focused on what it takes to succeed, both academically and socially, in high school. LINK Crew is more than a one-day event. Throughout the year, freshmen receive continued support and check-ins from their LINK leaders. The goal is to create connections, answer questions, and ensure students never feel like they are navigating high school alone. While LINK Crew is focused on freshmen, it also brings tremendous benefits to our upperclassmen. Student leaders receive training in leadership, communication, empathy, and teamwork. They take pride in shaping our school's culture and mentoring the next generation of students. In short, LINK Crew helps us build school culture where every student feels they belong from the very first day of school. It's a win for our freshmen, but also a win for our student leadership and a key part of fostering a positive... of fostering a positive and connected school community in Lakeville. Next is the BAR program that many of you have heard about as well, so I'm going to highlight that. The transition to high school is one of the most critical moments in a student's academic journey. Our BAR program is designed to strengthen that transition and set up students for long-term success. The model is simple and powerful, the same teachers, same students, and better results. Every student that attends our high school benefits from BAR, which is very unique. The program's focus is improving credit attainment, student attendance, and student connection to the school. All of our ninth-grade students are placed into a BAR team. Each team shares the same math, science, and English teachers. These teachers meet weekly to support students both academically and socially. During the teacher BAR meetings, they focus both on qualitative and quantitative data to understand each student's needs. The qualitative data, a lot of it's gathered during what they have as I-time lessons delivered by BAR teachers that BAR provides us. Teachers also observe student interaction, participation, collaboration, and engagement in their classes. The quantitative data is weekly grade behavior and attendance updates that are tracked and discussed in a shared spreadsheet. Although we're in our first year of implementation, we are already seeing signs of success. Freshmen have maintained an attendance rate of over 94%. We have experienced increased collaboration amongst our teachers, focused on individual student needs. We have also noticed stronger student-to-teacher relationships for the freshmen, and our teachers have reported greater awareness of our students' social-emotional needs through those I-time observations. So in June, we will be reviewing our initial data at our shared leadership meetings, and we will continue to monitor and track progress annually. BAR is helping us make sure that every student is known, supported, and on a path to success. It's not just about raising the grades, but it's also about building a connective and supportive school culture where no student falls through the cracks.
Principal Murphy, just a quick question. In practice for BAR, how does this work? Is it once a week, twice a week? When do they meet? How's it structured?
The teachers have small block meetings and big block meetings, and they try and meet weekly for the small block, which are kind of your lower-needs students. And then the big block means they'll pull in counselors, assistant principals, and BAR coordinator to talk kind of the higher-level students that need some more support throughout the school day. So the challenge is, and we're going to talk about this at the end, but the challenge is finding time for the teachers to meet. So it's a great question, because that was my biggest concern bringing it to Lakeville, because we have a pretty constrictive six-period schedule, where many schools have a seven-period day, and you're able to meet during that seventh hour of a service hour. So we'll talk about that at the end, but that is the biggest obstacle that we do face is the finding time for our teachers to meet.
Because is it, is it two separate meetings, a meeting amongst the teachers and then a meeting with the teachers and the students?
So the teachers meet without the students. They do I-time lessons, which is provided from BAR, they rotate that between subjects. And those are just more, you know, a teacher's charge of just kind of, it's a leadership activity where students participate, and that's where they get a lot of the qualitative data to see how students are, just not teaching math that day. A math teacher might be teaching something about, you know, your favorite activities and hobbies, what you're going to do over break, that sort of thing. So the teachers are meeting away from the students, to answer your question, for their small block meetings, yeah.
Director Carbone?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, some of the numbers upfront are nice to see, but consistency amongst the high schools. If, if a school bus accidentally dropped a South student off at North, would they be experiencing, is there a consistency among the curriculum where they would experience the same thing in both schools?
Absolutely. So the I-time lessons that BAR creates for us are the same lessons amongst both high schools. And we have a BAR coach that BAR provides, both high schools, and it's the same person. So she's going to visit Kim, talking to our BAR teachers, seeing how we're implementing BAR for ninth grade at North, but then also coming to Lakeville South, and we're learning from each other as we go. Kim and I will have an individual meeting with her after her visits to our buildings, and she'll give us tips for improvement, things she's seen that maybe North's doing that South isn't doing, and vice versa. And so we're being coached as administrators as well through BAR. And then they provide that coach yearly, so that's been very beneficial for both of us.
Director Anderson?
Okay, I'm just hoping you'll jog my memory about this, because I know it's a K through 12. I love that BAR is, is here, and feels like it's hopefully here to stay in a good way. But, so it's K through 12, we're trialing ninth grade and seeing how things go, and then making a plan to expand, hopefully? Is that the aim, goal?
Yeah, I mean, ninth grade, I think, you know, all the data suggests that that's the most crucial year for students to succeed, if they're even thinking of on a bad, so we started in ninth grade at the high school. Middle schools have looked at it as well, they haven't jumped into BAR yet, but they've looked at it. And we have, and we hope to, I mean, we'd love to expand it to 10th grade. There's not a lot of high schools that do 11th and 12th grade, just because, you know, once you get there, you're pretty well set typically, hopefully, if BAR's doing what it's supposed to do. You have all your credits, your attendance is good, and you're on the right path. And so I haven't seen many high schools that have it for juniors or seniors, but definitely would love to see it possibly expand to 10th grade. Yeah.
All right, starting in the 2425 school year, we added counselors to our school. These positions were desperately needed as we continued to grow and serve the students in our schools. This year, each high school had three counselors, and there was one at Lakeville Pathways. This took some of the academic pressure off of our deans and allowed our deans to assume roles that are now assistant principals. As of early May, the counselors at North had well over 2,000 student-booked appointments. These appointments in the past would have fallen on the deans, in addition to their administrative duties, would not have had this many touchpoints with students. We're very proud of the resource this has provided for our students. Students have a wide range of reasons to visit the counseling office, course and post-secondary planning, schedule changes, study strategies, test anxiety, sometimes just stress, 504 testing accommodations, or talking about school-related issues like their attendance. Of the appointments booked, juniors visited most often with their counselor as they looked to plan their post-secondary plans, PSEO courses, college searches, as well as the pressure that goes along with making these decisions. Seniors were next, most likely to book an appointment with a counselor as they work through the common applications for college, completed financial aid applications, scholarship applications, and again, the stress that goes along with their final year of schooling. We are grateful for the additional support counselors have provided our high schools. Their expertise has made a significant impact in the personalized planning for post-secondary and for their academics.
Director Anderson?
If you could have as many as you think you need, how many would you have?
Eight.
At each high school?
I have a related question. I mean, so we see 2,000 appointments or 2,100 appointments. I mean, what does that equate to on a day-to-day basis for our counselors?
From the beginning of the day, yeah. A lot of times, it's appointment, and that, that doesn't count for an emergency that comes up or a situation. If there, a lot of times, if there has been a disciplinary thing that comes up during the day, a lot of times, we'll bring that counselor in to also do some on-the-spot mediation, or some planning, or some development of how, why the behavior happened the way it did. So that is, they're busy all day.
Director Cameron?
Thanks for presenting about the counselors. I was surprised that Lakeville didn't have counselors up until this last year, so I, like, Director Anderson, are very supportive of this. And I know, you know, I think our community still needs to hear that that's an important resource for our students, and that, you know, we try to continue at times to go to gain more support for that. And if you look at our peer districts like Wayzata or 196, or, you know, other large school districts, they really have double the number of counselors per student that we have. And I think this shows, the more support you can give kids, the more access they have to conversations about post-secondary success, about academic achievement, and we're lagging. So I appreciate what we have, but we need to continue to support that and build that. Thank you.
Director Carbone?
Yeah, Kim or Sean, 100% of the appointments that are made, I know you're showing numbers up there, what's the percentage, just ballpark, of repeats? And what I mean, if 100% of the appointments are everyone's a brand-new student, or 100% means 30% of the students are all repeats? Do you have a sense of that?
I really don't. I mean, the number of appointments outweighs the number of students in our school, so obviously there are people who book multiple appointments for multiple reasons. And sometimes it is, you know, you had planned to go to one college, and then the financial package came through, and it wasn't quite what you thought, so now you have a whole new set of questions about a different college or a different, so I don't have a perspective of how many of them are, have been a series of appointments, this was just flat number of.
Just a flat number? Okay, thank you.
Director Baker?
I just want to add, from a parent perspective on this, my high school student, between this year and last year, just the management of the 504 plan has been immensely easier with the addition of the counselors. It's been something he comes home, he talks about when he's met with his counselor, I've heard a lot about it. It's been a really, really positive experience, and he's developed like a really great relationship with his counselor. So I'm just very thankful that we have this service available.
Director Thompson?
I believe last year, the proposal was that we were only able to allocate three counselors in each high school, one for, well, and the seniors were kind of trying to double up or something. Obviously, eight would be great, from what we're hearing, but as a community, striving to even get to four would probably be ideal, so that each grade would have its own academic advisor slash counselor assigned to them. It would be, it would be helpful, you know, back to what Director Carbone said, the utilization is there. So it sounds like the students want it, need it, and they're having conversations with it, which is great. But it would be helpful if there is any metrics that show grade year-over-year. While we are investing on four FTEs, roughly $600,000 in each building, and I'm assuming if we get to four counselors in each school, roughly $600,000 a year, is the year-over-year of each grade kind of, you know, the next 11th grade, are their grades improving in some capacity? Now, again, there's so many factors that are involved, and obviously, what we do know is that students are using it, and they're using it for academics, they're using it for social, emotional components, and career planning, but to help us maybe with the community and the rest of the board to allocate that extra fourth, like, we need that extra fourth resource. So, thank you.
All right. Well, here we go. These are kind of our wish lists, if you will, but we each are going to talk about one, and I've been pounding this drum for the 25 years I've been in Lakeville, but it's flexible scheduling. We've had the same schedule in Lakeville since I've been here and a long time before that, which is a six-period day. It's a six-period schedule with two semesters, which is the most restrictive.
Sean, how long have you been here?
Over, since we were one high school and, you know, operating that under a teacher. So, you know, it's a restrictive schedule, it's the most restrictive schedule in the South Suburban Conference. A six-period schedule limits students' access to electives, interventions, and enrichment opportunities. In a six-period schedule, students can only take 48 total courses over four years, versus some of our neighboring districts, such as Burnsville and District 196, who offer a seven-period schedule, allowing students to take up to 56 courses for four years. So the six-period schedule also creates real limitations for our students, especially those involved in rigorous or well-rounded programming. For example, a student in band or choir, if they're taking a world language, they often have no room for electas until their junior, senior year. So it's very, very restrictive. Also, students interested in STEM, the arts, business, or trades, also face those same scheduling barriers in their schedule. So our current model, while it's cost-effective, restricts student opportunities. Adding a seventh period requires an investment, but the return in opportunity is pretty significant. They've estimated anywhere from...
Principal Murphy, can we just get, can we just jump straight to it? Like, what's preventing you from even moving to this model? Like, because I don't know. I mean, because I've got, I think if the students are there, the staff is there, why can't we just move to a seventh? Because we're adjusting the minutes.
That, that's...
I don't know.
That's a big dollar sign.
But why is it a big dollar sign? Change it if we've got the staffing and the students there?
I'm happy to show you. We've run this model multiple times in the past. There's a lot of support for it, but I think, I think you need to see the financials to understand the dynamic of this problem set.
Is it a contract issue? Is that what it is?
No, it's, it's... Well, it could be.
Let's be candid, I mean, if the staff is there and the students are there, I mean, I don't, I don't, I...
It's part of that, it's, you know, teacher contract, but also, you know, looking at, you know, you're adding courses. And so, you know, to do that, you have to add teachers. And so typically, they say it's roughly around, for a building our size, and, you know, I'm not, Bill Holmgren could probably give you a better answer than this, because I've talked to him about this, but it's adding close to eight teachers per building.
Eight?
Yes, the way our contract's set up. So it is an investment, you know, but it does provide a lot of benefits, more academic and elective opportunities for students, and increased access to interventions during the school day, but also enrichment opportunities during the school day. And students are, especially those students that are trying to take all the AP courses they can and see what interests them in high school, it really impacts, you know, what they're able to take. If you want to take music, it handcuffs even more, so.
Do we, do we have space in the buildings for eight additional teachers?
That's, that's, she's next, so I'll leave it there unless there's questions on the flexible scheduling, but there are schedules that we've looked at over the years, and as we grow and continue to evolve, it's something that's always, I'm always going to be talking about, so.
All right, mine is to talk about smaller class sizes and facility expansion. Many of our classes have 35 students or higher. And while 35 may sound like a small number, our teachers teach five sections a day, and this places teachers at a course load of 175 or higher, if it's above 35. With smaller class sizes, teachers could more easily interact with their students, provide tier-one instruction and interventions that could be addressed more quickly. Our teachers are amazing. They do the very best they can. But even in the best of situations, our classrooms were never physically meant to hold up to 40 students. Rooms are tight, not allowing for room for teachers or students to adequately move around or move furniture to better collaborate with. In addition to concerns about the actual number of students in classrooms, we are nearing capacity for rooms in our schools. While both campuses have unique programming, we are growing increasingly concerned about being able to offer the most current and up-to-date programming and materials for our students, whether that's in large STEM labs, CAD drafting areas, art software, science equipment, or physical materials for our students to create, design, collaborate, and explore with. We want to stay current and give Lakeville students the best that they deserve. Finally, we are excited about the number of students that are interested in the challenge of college education while in high school. While many students choose to leave campus for studies, we believe strongly that we can do the same curriculum and support our students as they learn how to navigate college curriculum from our own campus. Concurrent enrollment allows students to stay on their high school campus while earning college credits. In order to offer these courses, teachers must go through a rigorous training process. They must have a master's in content area or 18 additional content credits above a master's degree. In order to offer more concurrent courses, we need more teachers who have the accreditation to teach these courses. The difference comes when paying for concurrent enrollment classes versus PSEO. It is that we could fill a course for a set dollar amount with as many students as capped in that class, rather than paying for students to individually go to get their PSEO credit. We would ensure that courses offered at the high school level would fulfill transfer requirements to other institutions. More students could have access to the courses as they are held in our classrooms, rather than having students find transportation or be forced into online PSEO options. We could provide the necessary safety net for students who may, who may struggle with college courses, and at this point, we don't know how college students are doing until their final college transcripts are sent back to the high schools. As a school, we are not able to check in or learn about the grades or credit attainment until the final transcript comes. If we held these courses in our building, we could help students with our counseling staff checking in when grades are low. We could also keep more students actively leading and learning on our campus. When our seniors leave, we lose their leadership in many of our elective offerings.
I have a follow-up question for you, Principal Goody. And we had the pleasure of having Mr. Just here, was it a month ago, two months ago? Do we have teachers?
Do we have teachers that are qualified and ready to go to teach these college and the schools courses?
We do have some. I think it is, it's natural for teachers to get a master's in education. It would be kind of for, forcing us, there we go, forcing us to have a mindset of not just getting the master's in education, but we're actually going to ask people to get master's in content area if they're doing their master's work anyway. This would allow us to expand that. It's just not, it's just not what we've done yet. And so if we can change that mindset about how to have teachers continue to grow in their own growth and asking them to consider thinking of that, that pathway version rather than the education. And I have an education master, so I have no problem with that, but it does open the doors for us to offer concurrent enrollment when they have that master's.
Yeah, because I agree with you. I mean, your slideshow shows 353 students currently in PSEO. We had the financial packet in the board meeting today, hundreds of thousands of dollars going to, I think it's Normandale or other colleges. So we pay our students to go, or pay other schools to take our students for PSEO.
Correct. And if we could keep them in a class of 25 on our own campus for about $4,000, we'd be saving significant money.
So this one seems a little bit more of a manageable ask than maybe some of the other wish list items. But what, what can we as a board do to kind of assist in providing more college and schools?
I'm someone who believes really strongly in concurrent enrollment and I've had a lot of experience setting up concurrent enrollment. I think for, for us, it is helping change the mindset of PSEO is the only option for students to gain college credit. And so much like I think schools have continued to evolve that four-year degree is not the only pathway to whatever your journey is beyond high school. We're starting to talk more about what is, what does a two-year college or a technical college have for you? We just need to talk about that there are multiple ways for us to help you get to that next level. And I think for us in, as administrators, it is always really hard when we get those final transcripts from a college and we have now suddenly a senior who did not pass a course and we don't know about it until days before graduation. And so for us to be able to have that ability to coach and to guide and to help them through, to encourage them to take the rigorous course pathway, but with a safety net.
Director Thompson.
Yeah, I would be 100% in favor of something like that. I think I saw recently Burnsville had like 75 students earned their two-year associate's degree while in high school, in high school. And so the whole college in a school concept, like it works and it's doable because Burnsville is doing it. And so it's super surprising that we're not at that level where we may be able to have as much, have something comparable. But I think what you shared earlier was, to me, really hits home because not every kid can, can do PSEO. Not every kid may want to do PSEO, but more importantly, not every kid may want to go to college. And so when we, when I looked at a couple of slides earlier, I think the algebra, two, 34 students, 22 participating in advanced academics, so 22 out of 34, so, you know, what, two-thirds are doing advanced classes. They're ready and wanting to do something like that, but what about the other one-third of the students that don't want to go down that path? We, as an organization or as a school district in my mind, we focus so much on AP classes. 1,743 students doing AP classes out of the 4,000 students that we have. We, we focus on PSEO. We've got some college in a school with chemistry. But where's the pathway for a person who wants to be an electrician, a plumber, an HVAC, cosmetology, and maybe that might be.
I was going to offer that one of those concurrent courses that's in that, that number is our advanced welding actually has concurrent enrollment with DCTC. So there are, there's actually an easier pathway to get somebody in a trade accredited to become a concurrent enrollment than, than maybe a full master's or a master's plus 18. So if it's, if there is somebody who's in a trade, who's in our schools, who also is an active member of that trade, there is a process, a different process to get them accredited.
Yep. So then by having concurrent services within our schools, we have a easier pathway for those students that could actually leave high school with a plumbing certification, with an electrician certification, or welding, or whatever it may be. Fantastic. And then I think the last thing I want to share is that besides college, besides the trades path, some, maybe just like, I wrote down four because I don't know. I'm just thinking like Harry Potter, there's like four houses and you just pick a path that you want. You've got the college path, you've got the trades path, but you've got the technology path. People who just, they don't need a college degree to, to learn how to code, to, to learn Microsoft Office, to be a, you know, a systems engineer. And then lastly, I was just thinking, I don't know if there's an arts path, but like there are, are, are schools in my mind has a huge emphasis, and then the data says 76% go to college, right? But, but for those that choose not to, or for those who choose to go to college, is it because that's the only path that they're allowed to go to, go do? And so having alternative pathways, just, I'm all in favor in whatever we can do to kind of support you in that effort.
Director Baker.
So I just have a question, and this is kind of related to the board's discussion that we had earlier about teachers that as they earn more education, they're more expensive to hire. This again would push teachers into that higher range. So then it's also staff members that have to seek out that level of education to be able to teach these concurrent enrollment classes. Is there some type of stipend or benefit for staff to help them pay for these courses?
Actually, I was going to add that, but that's a good question because when Chair Swanson had mentioned what, what can you do to support. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is Kerry Pop still here? But I'm, I'm pretty sure that our teachers had to pay out of pocket to get their masters in their fields. So we had, you mentioned Jason Just, but also Sarah Miller doing pre-calculus for college credit. They had to get courses accredited through a college and they had to pay out of their pocket. And so to incentivize teachers willing to do this, many of our teachers already have their masters because of the salary incentive, such as Kim in a general masters area, but to incentivize them, well, why would they get a second masters? And have to pay for it to give our students college credit. It doesn't, some have done it, which is very admirable, but is there a methodology where we could help incentivize them to do that? So opens a door. That and then a partnership with a college is very important, is a district. And so I think Bleed Burnsville, I can't remember who they went through, but I saw that same thing that, Enver Hills, that Chair Thompson had mentioned. They have a partnership with their district with Enver Hills. And so, and I'm sure there's some give and take there with the financial incentives for teachers to get accredited. And so exploring those partnerships would be very crucial for us.
Correct. And it's also a concern of mine because one of the things that the federal government is looking at is discontinuing the PSLF program, which is the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. A lot of educators, police officers, nurses, they are involved in that program. You pay on your student loans for 10 years and then whatever is left over is then forgiven. So just knowing that a lot of teachers utilize that pathway too, that's just another thing to continue to advocate for, to support programs like these.
Director Anderson.
Yeah, I, I'm curious about Mr. Bowman's opinion about this proposal. I know we heard kind of the financial considerations of your other very good proposal. But also would want to understand kind of your vision for this. Like it sounds like you have some staff who are kind of ready for this based on their master's degree, but then how would this, what kind of period of time? Or would you have to recruit people or would we develop within, or that would be helpful to just understand the vision. But yeah, Mr. Bowman, I don't know if you have any thoughts about this one.
Well, I have lots of thoughts about this, this and, you know, I, I sit where Brian does with regard to how do we expand our capability and do that, again, financially responsibly? And, and that's always the balance, right? How do you take those baby steps forward and set conditions? Like my advocacy around the flexible scheduling has been to go through many iterations of details on how to finance that. And all of these problems are scalable with the right financial support behind it, but not just for a short period of time, but sustained. So building that institutionally into the system. And not to say that, you know, I, I don't like getting into the, this program versus that program and you have a limited resource scenario, so you're going to do this one and that one's going to lag behind. Because that, that exists all over our district in so many different ways. So more importantly, you know, the concurrent is, is an obviously strong way to get our kids, whether they are, and not just a college track, but trades tracks. To me, it's, it's a matter of exploration and seeing what those partnerships can be and whether we can afford or figure out a way to afford those. Because those are real opportunities for our kids coming out of high school. And so we should do a full court press.
I think one thing that is important about that is even if we don't go down the full AA degree, it's really important to be mindful of picking courses that are transferable. There is a list of transferable credits. I, I would not offer underwater basket weaving as a course because it would not transfer to many credits. But if you get to an English, you know, 1104 or something like that, that is a requirement for all freshmen, that's where you give them that opportunity to practice college within a safe setting. And that is then a credit. You're not going to get to the full AA degree overnight. That takes time and you have to build capacity starting with those basic credits and those transferable credits and then build to an actual program. And that, I know, I, I was, I know when Burnsville started and it was about 18 years ago. And now they are at the point where they are offering the full two-year degrees.
Director Carbone.
Yeah, thank you. I'm curious of each of your opinions. If you could only have one of the four and, and there was some capacity to do it.
Margaret didn't even get to ask hers yet. We've got to give her a chance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think, yeah. I'm going to guess what four is. But that being said, if, if you could only have one of the four, which one do you think it'd have the most impact on students? And I know this is your opinion, but I'm just curious. Is there, is there a hill to die on here?
I actually think the scheduling affects the most students and gives the most opportunities for that intervention and recovery. We can always grow the college prep courses, we can grow the concurrent enrollment. But giving students more opportunities to explore more things early on is, is important. It's hard when we say we want students to do, to find their passion and develop their professions when they don't get to start that until their junior year. So if we can get that embedded earlier, that's, that's what I would.
And I'm curious, any other opinions on that?
I'd say one leads into two because when you build that flexible scheduling and everything grows, then you have to look at your facilities and your expansions, which also includes us because we were moved from one building to another. So they kind of bleed together on one and two.
Sean?
Well, I think you all know I'm going to say one because that's what I've been screaming for a long time. And, but I, I think Margaret said it really well there. For example, and in the schools with seven-period schedule, I talked about interventions and what you can do. If you're struggling as a ninth grader in algebra and you don't have any time in your schedule to get any help, whereas if you have a seven-period day, one of your electives could be a structured time with the algebra teacher later in the day, which many high schools have. So, because if you start getting behind as a freshman and sophomore, there's not a lot out there for you. You're playing a credit recovery game. And so those PSEO opportunities, those concurrent enrollment opportunities, those are going to come your junior and senior year. But if you don't have the support systems in place for freshmen and sophomores, to me that's a larger impact. We're talking all of our students would benefit from, even our go-getter students that really just need that extra period of the day to, to work on things and, and that sort of thing. So there's, yeah, I'm going to stick there.
Director Baker.
I'm going to strongly advocate for number four and I'm going to give you the reason why, because I know Margaret won't, because I know her heart. When we made budget cuts, when I started as a board member, our ALC campus received one of the biggest cuts, I think, that anybody in the district had to receive, and that was they gave up their building. They gave up their building. And granted, they, they got a space that we have at Kenwood Trail that's been fantastic for them. But one thing I've learned as a special education parent is that it is vital for a district to support and maintain supports for their most vulnerable population. And I feel like the students at Pathways Academy are one of our most vulnerable student populations. Not only for their academic needs, but their mental health needs. Knowing that you got another counselor, I think that's great, but also knowing that you and your building have students that are coming in from treatment facilities. And that's a lot to transition a student back from something like that and to help recover their classes and to help them graduate. And I attend, I've attended ALC graduations for at least 10 years and I continually watch the students that cross that stage that, that cry and say, I couldn't have gotten here without the supports that I received from the ALC campus. Another thing about that is because we have such a, a strong ALC campus here, we are not contracting for those services from 917. We're, those students, our students are being served here within our district. And so if we're going to provide flexible scheduling for our entire students in the high school, then I would say that that doesn't pass without an assistant principal at Pathways.
Director Cameron.
Thanks. A question I have is around the credit recovery work. I know we focused a lot on concurrent enrollment and giving students advanced learning. How would you, and I saw the number of classes that have been recovered each year, but how does that, how do you feel like our students are able to take advantage of credit recovery right now? Do you feel like we're doing well? Are we struggling to get enrollment? And then my other question is, at what time can a student start enrolling in credit recovery in 194?
As soon as they fail a class. So if I have a freshman after their first semester that has failed a class, we can start them immediately. It keeps growing. We have developed a process over the last six years of me taking over where we coordinate a lot with our high schools. We, first it was their APs and now it's their counselors and their APs. We take referrals, we run lists with all of our data to determine who needs it. We contact the families directly, we'll send out emails, we'll make phone calls. We recruit for them to come in and do their recovery. Over 200 classes in one summer, we're talking about a, a six-week period. These students, when they get that opportunity, they use it. But it is a scheduling effort. If they have sports, if they have something else after school, then we have to look at summer and it delays it. The sooner we can catch them, the better. I don't like triaging at the end when we have our seniors that are looking at not graduating on time. But we try to identify them as early as possible to get them started.
I'm assuming we're being more proactive with, with the three counselors that we have in each high school about academic track and so forth. I do have one, I have, I have another topic, but I want to be mindful. Is there any other questions?
I don't know that we've given Principal Garean opportunity to state her request.
And thank you, Kim. An assistant principal at Pathways and Online Academy. Currently, we have a structure of programs that has one administrator for eight complex programs, providing administration for approximately 1,500 to 2,000 students in a year-round program. Coordination for all buildings year-round, one administrative representative for 504's IEPs required district levels that are currently elementary, middle, and high school. One administrator coordinating outside agencies such as the county, the courts, PSEO, treatment facilities, and others. One admin providing day-to-day operations, instructional leadership, anything on disciplinary issues, consultation for complicated cases across the district, and trying to maintain our customer service at the best level we can for all of our Lakeville students are some of the reasons for this request.
Director Thompson, you had a question?
Well, you know I support it, so.
I, I do want to acknowledge and agree with you. I mean, I think when we made this decision two years ago, there was, it was not easy. I think we, we had some budget cuts, we had a million dollars that was on the table to help kind of close that gap. It was not looking favorable. But my hope is that maybe in this particular year or so forth, there will be kind of a pathway around what does our future growth look like for our community? What does the next building might look like? And when we've got some boundary changes, that might be, that might be underway. We've got three schools at 65% capacity. And, and so I think there's some discussions that might need to be thought through around what additional creative things that we can do. But that's for another conversation. The one thing that I did notice, and, and I'm going to hypothesize here and help me if I'm mistaken, and this might lead to a much broader conversation on another day regarding. dashboards and metrics. There was a slide that you showed earlier, a slide, the, the Algebra II and the Algebra, and the English 10. And what caught my eye was that, in the Algebra II slide, I don't know if you can get to that or not. There was a comment, 47% of 10th grade students are not meeting MCA benchmark. And we've got over 1,743 students taking AP classes out of our 4,000 students. So, half of our kids are doing, are, are in advanced classes, but half of our kids aren't meeting 10th grade MCA benchmark. So, if you go to the next slide, you've got English 10, 50% of our kids are not hitting eighth grade benchmark in, in reading. And then, I think if you go to a couple more slides, you've, we've got a GPA of a 3.27. So, one would think, okay, you know, that's a, that's a B+, that's, that's a good average. But then, I think about our AP classes, they get an extra credit or an extra point in their GPA if they get an A. So, they get a 5.0 instead of a 4.0 for AP classes. And I don't know how many AP students get, get a, get a 5.0. So, I'm, I'm wondering if the 3.27 really isn't 3.27 because of our number of AP students that are getting As. And, and so, then I go to the ACT scores that you've got, which shows that we are at 22.9%, and our national average is, is 19.4. So, something seems not clicking, if that makes sense? I mean, we've got good ACT scores, we've got kids not hitting MCA benchmark, our GPAs are 3.25, and maybe this is for another conversation, but that, that's my observation.
Okay. You're good with numbers. That's, 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 you nailed a lot of it. But what's the incentive to do well in the MCA?
There is none. There's no incentive. I'm, I'm sorry. For students, they don't get extra points. They don't get extra credit, there is no reason for them to actually take it, because it doesn't impact their grade, from my understanding.
Many don't take it.
Director Cameron?
I, I would say incentive means a lot, and that's why I think it's, you know, looking at MCA scores give you a, a little piece to the story of what is actually occurring in these buildings. And it's been a frustration, you know, for many school districts for a long time about those, and, and how do you incentivize them? They've, I've heard everything over the years from, "Well, we'll put them on your transcript, well, we'll, you know, help you get in a college placement." None of that's occurred. And so, I think it boils down to incentive.
Going back to that Algebra II slide, I feel like I have a similar question, and maybe this explains it, Sean, what you're saying, but I saw we have 47% not at benchmark, but 22%, 22 students, which is more than half, I don't know the percentage, is taking advanced. So, what I saw is like, we have kids taking advanced, what I would, if I was like a regular person reading this, I'd say we have kids who are taking advanced learning who have failed the MCA. Like, that's what that says to me, which that doesn't make sense. But what I think, maybe, maybe what we're saying is like, not all the 34 are taking MCAs even. Is that, okay.
That's why that one's a percentage, the other ones are just numbers of students. And so, that shows you how skewed the MCA data is.
Is it 50% take it?
And you've gotta remember that just because this is an algebra classroom, and that bottom score is talking about just the MCA for reading, I could be sitting in that classroom, and I could be taking AP Psych. Or, or AP Lang.
I see what you're saying.
So, I could still be taking advanced courses and something different, too. So.
So, maybe we're all aligning that the MCA scores isn't the ideal score, or it's, we should consider other metrics to have more of a truer validation of our community's academics.
That's exactly what you should be doing, and that's what we're trying to do as well as we develop the, the metrics. You know, we'll isolate it to teaching and learning, since that's really the topic here. The, the biggest challenge we have is how do we, how do we rigorously and effectively serve our students and our community? And then, how do we paint that picture for you? And that's what we're, that's the trail we're on, is trying to do that. So, this is a very, very good conversation. I want, I, I just wanna say I appreciate it.
I do just also wanna emphasize, I'm very much, I think we as a board are very much looking forward to seeing the data with the new counselors and the bar program, just because so much of that, I think we're, has been missing in terms of how we help kids be successful through high school, through our, through our schooling in general. And so, it would be great, I hope. It's kinda like when you press the button for the stats analysis, and you're like, please, like, hopefully, it moves in that direction that we're hoping. You guys are talking about the effectiveness, and I think we are the efficacy, and it'd be great if the data support that, so we can really kinda get more dollars behind that.
I have to ask while you're here. I don't know if you've watched any of our meetings, but we've talked a lot about metrics and assessment data, and, you know, questioning what is a reliable metric? And since you are the leaders of our high schools, and probably more expertise on these issues, what would you recommend us to look at as far as a reliable metric for analyzing student performance?
I don't wanna get into a long conversation, because I know there's a lot of other groups, maybe this is for another night, but the graduation rate. Because as I said earlier, every student's, there is no perfect path. It is different for every student. And to be able to meet students where they arrive and get them to that point of a plan beyond high school, there's a lot that happens in that four years, in that journey, and it might be tests, it might be a whole list of life events, it might be, who knows? But to say that we're getting them to graduation is, to me, what a metric of success would be, and I know that that's a discussion for another day, but I, I don't know that there's a test score metric that is perfect, because these are humans. There, there's a story that goes with them. There's more to them than just a number, and the story is, is what we feel is celebration.
I'm gonna add, looking at ACT data, especially since the state started offering the ACT exam in the high school buildings, which happened a few years ago, you're seeing highly motivated students take that assessment, and there's obviously incentive to do well. And so, then, looking at how our teachers are helping prepare them, you know, all the way from early childhood, when I, when I don't say early childhood, I get in trouble. So, I wanna make sure I include them.
Thank you.
Got, got that covered, all the way through senior year in Lakeville. And building up to that moment as a junior where you're taking that, and that's, you know, norm nationally, and you get to compare yourself nationally, statewide, and people are highly motivated to take that exam. And I think it was over, I can't remember the percentage we had in both buildings, there was over 50% of our, our juniors that took that exam this year, and I think it was even higher than that, but it's a good measurement. And it's, I think that's, anytime when you have students giving it their all, trying their best on an exam, I think you can look at that data and say, okay, that's a good one to look at for a district. So, that'd be my two cents.
I happen to agree with Kim completely, because the students that I work with are usually Tier Two and Tier Three, which means they are not on track for graduation on time. So, if we can get them to that point, we've done some really good things. So, it is a whole journey, it is a whole process, and I agree with graduation as one of our metrics.
Thank you.
That was a hot one.
All right.
Can we also thank our assistant principals for being in the audience, too? Thank you for coming. Yeah.
All right, moving on to community education overview. Mr. Porter, if you would. I feel a lot of APs out there.
I think I'm missing, oh, we got it right here. All right, cool. Can you hear me okay? All right. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Baumann, members of the cabinet and executive cabinet, thank you for having me here this evening. I was promised I could have at least twice as much time as the high school, but I'll cover that much content in a very much shorter period of time.
I gotta sign.
Perfect. Well, again, thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Steve Porter, I'm the director of community education. I'm also joined here by Molly Dexter, who is the director of early childhood education, to be able to answer any questions you have there. Again, this is a brief overview of the community education department. Director Baker, Director Cameron can also attest that I have a much more in-depth presentation that does last about an hour. That's not what we have here for you here today, but we do provide that for our advisor council members or liaisons who are interested in just taking a deeper dive. But today, what we're gonna do is we're gonna talk just very briefly about what is community education, the different activities, programs, and services that comprise it, the impact, a brief look at participation over time, finances over time, and then some of the people that help make it happen. So, with that, there we go. So, what is community education? A lot of times, when you say that word, people, one or two programs come into their mind. And actually, there's, it's an umbrella with a whole lot of different programs and services, and that's what we're gonna talk about. But what unifies it? Community education came out of the lighted schoolhouse concept. And back in the 1930s in Michigan, there's, there were, so a number of communities were facing some issues with not having good access to career advancement or technical education, they're also having higher crime rate for the youth, and issues with access to quality education throughout their community. A number of leaders came together and looked at what other resources do we already have in our community to address our own needs? And the biggest one that came to mind is at that point in time, schools, at the end of the school day, were closed, locked, and the lights were turned off. So, those leaders said, well, what happens if we do open up these buildings for career and technical education during the evenings or weekends, or programs for youth during at-risk times? And they had a lot of success, and that whole idea grew in Michigan and to other states. In Minnesota, it took a big leap forward in 1972 with the establishment of many community education programs across the state. Our school district was one of them, so 1972, so we've been in this business in our district for over 50 years. Fun fact is, in that 53 years, guess how many community education directors you've had? Two. So, I'm only the second. Tremendous amount of credit goes to Pete Martin and all the staff who helped support him, as well as for developing what we have here in Lakeville. So, again, a lot of tremendous work that's happened throughout the years. So, fast forward to today, is that we make a unique contribution and valuable contribution in all these activities, programs, and services to the district mission and vision. We are part of the school district, but we aim to provide our community with learning opportunities and resources in order for our community to develop lifelong skills. So, what does it look like? So, we have 16 programs, activities, and services in 17 of our buildings. The only two that I'm not counting is district office and district maintenance facility, but we're open to opportunities there, too. We aim to be flexible and adaptable to the needs of our community, and that's why community education departments may look a little bit different from district to district, because they're supposed to reflect the needs of that specific community. So, it's happening beyond the school age, beyond the school day, and beyond the school year. So, that beyond the school age might be early childhood education, or adult education, beyond the school day, might be before school, after school, non-school days, and then beyond the school year is summer. So, I'm gonna use the word umbrella a lot tonight, because we have five different umbrellas of kind of program areas that we're, we're under, and I'll just try and run through them quickly, but I also wanna orient you to some of the numbers that I'm gonna toss in front of you here, too. On the right-hand side, we have participants in the last complete year that we have. So, that's 23, 24. Usually, the top box is gonna be early childhood education, ages zero through five. Middle is gonna be somewhere for K-12, and then the bottom number usually will be adults as well. So, talk about the early childhood education umbrella. Now, we're coming together from across the district to support our families and our students in early childhood education. That means community education has a place, a piece to play, special education has a valuable place, I can't say it, piece to, to offer, and teaching and learning does. And so, we look at it as a both-and prospect. So, teaching and learning may oversee a number of items within early childhood education, but also by statute and funding, some of those programs still need to fall within community education. So, again, we come together for the both-and support. So, big umbrella for early childhood education includes ECFE, or early childhood family education, early childhood screening, Small Wonders preschool, early childhood special education, and Wonder Zone preschool-aged childcare. Those are the five. Again, early child special educations overseen by the special education department, and the other four are within community education. So, hitting on three, three main ones. Early childhood family education. That is an opportunity, usually it's a family's first introduction to the school district, and sometimes one of the most memorable and valuable experiences that they've had. Parents will spend time along with their children, learning from a licensed early childhood educator, and then oftentimes split out and get specific lessons from a licensed parent educator, anywhere from positive discipline, nutrition, managing multiples, a lot of different topics. And if you talk to parents in the community, you're gonna find out that this is oftentimes where parents have kind of met their support group, or their clan, and that they've stayed in touch with them throughout all their school years. Again, this is an excellent introduction to learning as a family. Moving on to early childhood screening, that is a free developmental screening offered by the district, anywhere from ages three to five. We're trying to identify any risk factors or special needs that children or families have at a very young age level. That way, we can provide those resources to support early to the early intervention. Again, when we look at return on investment, those early interventions will often be less costly to the system, or school district, or the state, if you can address them early, plus much more effective for the student and family. So, again, we are incentivized to screen earlier at age three versus four versus five. When you see the number 21 up there, kindergartners, those are just the kindergartners that we weren't able necessarily to screen until they reach kindergarten. Now, they may be recent move-ins, or people that didn't show up on our radar until the very last minute, we haven't been able to reach to, reach with, but I believe, Molly can correct me if I'm wrong, but last year, we screened 784 students. Only 21 of them were, met the kindergarten age before they were screened, which is an excellent rate. So, moving on, Small Wonders preschool is our district preschool program.
Director Thompson?
Mr. Porter, the, the 3,060 that you have for early childhood education, is that how many that we have serviced, or is that how many there is in total, and we have, and we've only serviced like 80% of them? Like, what's, what's the big, what's the number? Are we missing out on this, too?
Oh, yeah. Wonderful question. So, let me hit a couple of those answers. As, I should've said at the beginning, these are registrations. So, there will be some duplication in the numbers. So, let's say you signed up for Small Wonders preschool, and let's say the parent also signed up for an ECFE class, that may count as two participants. So, I wanna be clear about what that number is and what that number isn't. When you're asking about, I believe you're asking about the overall piece of the pie for early childhood education population in the Lakeville area schools that we're serving, I'm gonna tell you, I used to know the number, but I think that has changed a lot. So, I don't wanna give, unfortunately, I'm not able to give a percentage, but it's less than you would think.
I think it's like 25% or less.
Ballpark is what.
Of what we're able to serve, and some of that's due to the capacity that we have within our buildings, because it's full, and it has been full for what, like four years? Like, we've been maxed out on space. In fact, like, I think they even gave up like the teacher lounge, just for more space for classes. But then, also, we lose to districts around us that have the early childhood space, because they're in close driving distance, and people usually drive to work. And so, then, we, the, the thing is, like, do they come back to our district sometimes? Sometimes not.
So, so if I look at the 30, the 3,000 number, I'm just, I'm just hypothesizing, if half of them are duplicates because of they, they, whatever, that's 1,500, and if you're saying that we're only actually servicing 25% of our population, we've got 5,000 kids between zero and five, and we're only, and we're missing out on 75% of them at high level?
High level, that would be pretty close. I mean, we High level, that would be pretty close. I mean, we try and serve as many as we can. And again, Ms. Dexter can chime in at any time, too. But you're absolutely right. Crystal Lake Education Center is where all these programs and services are located, and it has been full for years. You go in there, every single nook and cranny is being used for educational instructional purposes. And we, way back when, 2012, 2013, when we made the decision to repurpose Crystal Lake Elementary into Crystal Lake Education Center, one of the main reasons that the district wanted to do so is to attract and retain students. That's part of the, one of the reasons, and you look at the documents from World Architects, that Crystal Lake Education Center was chosen because it was in the north part of our district where we had the maximum opportunity to pull in the people from other districts. And it was right on 46, which has one of the highest traffic rates in the county. So. Add anything?
Thank you. I just want to add that we are, in the future, going to prepare a presentation about the logistics at Crystal Lake Education Center. But I can say that at this point in the year, unduplicated, over the course of a week, we have approximately 1,125 students, unduplicated, coming in and out the doors of the Crystal Lake Education Center, if that helps with numbers.
Can I ask a question? Just like knowing that we're at capacity and that there's just no more space, how does that impact our VPK numbers or access to those VPK?
We do not have VPK currently in our district.
Okay.
Yep. And that is, yeah, yeah, we do not have that program in our district.
Yep. So I'm totally doing some quick math here. If I've got 500 students in an elementary building, and we've got 11 of them, that's 6,000 roughly of our elementary students. And what I'm hearing from you is about 1,100 are being taken care of. And because I'm assuming from zero to five, if assuming each age is a grade level, you compare, so we're missing out significantly. And they're going elsewhere, or they're, or they're not doing it.
Yes. We do, we do have to turn away families every year depending on their, their schedule. And we offer, we have morning, we have afternoon, we have all day, we have every other day, we have all kinds of different possibilities for schedules. But we do put them on waitlists. By the time we get back to them with a possible opening, a lot of times, they've gone to another district. Yeah.
And again, Molly's absolutely right in that we, this really deserves, you know, a much deeper dive and do have, are going to prepare a, that presentation for you because I know there's, there's a lot that you have to answer any questions you do have. But one thing I will mention is just this morning, I believe I shared some data with Superintendent Bowman from Peter Leatherman, the name you might recognize, Morris Leatherman, who did research on exactly the topic you're talking about is if you attend an ECFE or preschool program in your home district, you are much more likely to stay in that district. If you attend an ECFE or preschool program in another district, your likelihood, and I'm not saying causation, correlation here, is much more likely that you will open and roll out. So he has that data, and we can share that as well. All right, I'm going to move, keep going with Small Wonders Preschool real quick. Is again, it is a large program. We've had it since 1986 when we actually took it over from an existing preschool. So we've had it much longer than many other districts, and it's much larger than many other districts that are fee-based. And just as Molly had said, we fill up early, especially some of those high-demand slots, like all day. You know, you're going to need to get your registration in January, February, which also makes us really feel bad for those that just move in. Or let's say the kids have developed a lot in that past year and now are age-appropriate, ready for that preschool experience. Or parents' situations have changed because they don't have an option in our school district essentially after that time, and that at least maybe not in their first few choices of format. But again, Small Wonders Preschool is absolutely fantastic for the quality, four-star parent where rated, as you heard in the good news. It has curriculum and that's aligned with the district. And not only helps prepare kids academically, but social-emotionally at the early childhood level, but also prepares them for their eventual kindergarten transition. So. Moving on, second umbrella is extended school services. Essentially, this is the childcare enrichment components for our district. You have Wonder Zone, which is the preschool age childcare. And that is something that wraps around the Small Wonders Preschool Day. You can choose which kind of days or portions of the day you have. It supports the learning that's happening in the preschool program, also Crystal Lake Education Center, and provides families with a lot of different support and enrichment. That way, kids can learn in the preschool environment, but also in a little bit different childcare enrichment environment as well. Kid Zone is for K through five, is all nine, all nine elementaries, and before school, after school, non-school days, and has lots of different flexible options for families to choose from. And it not only provides, you know, social-emotional environment for students, but also a lot of academic support, for homework help, different ways to enrich the learning that's happening during the school day. Then, moving on, we have Summer Adventures, which is K through five, obviously summertime. Again, incredibly flexible for families. You can choose the week, the day, the part of the day, whatever's going to meet your busy family's schedule for the summer. Again, lots of different academic, social-emotional ways to explore learning throughout the year. What is really special about Summer Adventures, though? As you think about it, it's the hub with the spokes for the wheel for summer, is that you have Summer Venture Sites. And kids that participate in that can also participate in, because we coordinate with targeted services, extended school year. We have a bus that goes off to swimming lessons. We have enrichment, additional enrichment programs that happen right there at the site as well. So it's kind of the whole center for summer learning as well. All right. And then we have the Den, which stands for Discover Enrichment Now. This is a newer program since the pandemic that we started to serve the special needs of middle schoolers. It's something we had heard in our, need from our community for a number of years that families really wanted something that was age-appropriate for middle schoolers, but was a safe, supportive environment for them to go to during the summer. So we don't call it childcare, because if you mentioned childcare to a middle schooler, they're going to run screaming for the hills. But we, we have something that is, again, age-appropriate, involves them in decision-making about what their summer is going to look like, provides much more options and some service learning opportunities as well. That's the 31 number that you see there. It's a small program, but we're trying to grow it as well. All right. Third umbrella is enrichment program, or enrichment area. There are a lot of different programs and services here, so you're going to, please forgive me, I'm going to try and be brief here. I'm not going to do it justice, but you can also see by the numbers, it serves a lot of people through a lot of different programs. So these folks are doing a tremendous amount. We have before and after school enrichment classes that are offering topics such as engineering, chess, sports, performance opportunities for like theater, languages, mostly at the elementary school level. So this provides, again, an enriching way to discover additional learning before and after school. We have youth service and development that is an opportunity for mostly middle schoolers and high schoolers to learn through service opportunities or leadership opportunities. Some of the leadership opportunities might include youth in government, Model UN, or a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, which is the Treats, Trades, and Tours program that we do to explore different career opportunities and at need, or at high-needs trades and careers. We also have our youth enrichment programs, which includes cheer, gymnastics, martial arts, and our performance ensembles. When you talked about the principals were up here before, talking about the importance of those high school participation in, for high school students. Cheer and the winter performance ensembles are some of the things that, ways that community education helps contribute towards that. We have our aquatics and safety programs. Took a big jump forward when the community approved the Blanchard Aquatics Center. So that not only provides us more opportunities to provide programming for all levels, especially adults, but also freed up some capacity in other two schools for swimming lessons, recreation, safety certification, health and fitness, et cetera. Performance or, performance opportunities are children's theater. One of the main passions that Pete Martin brought to our district was how to help youth grow through theater performance opportunities. And so you may be familiar with the name Giant Step Theater. He helped create that with a cadre of accomplices that made a tremendous opportunity for students. And we try and continue that, that passion and those opportunities through our partnership with Children's Castle Theater and a few other programs. Moving on to adult enrichment. That's a lot of the programs for adults to either further their skills in something or discover something new. But what's really important about that that you'll find out is this is where a lot of people make connections in the community. Maybe your kids are out of school, maybe you have a little bit more time, maybe you're at a different stage in life. You can learn things new, but you can also connect with people who have similar interests or passions or want to grow them together. A lot of times, like, for example, I'll use our Pound Fitness class. Yes, they're exercising, they're learning new skills, they're developing things, but that is a tight group that really supports each other. And I joke that if the Community Learning Center across the way burned down, they'd still be showing up to Pound Fitness Class because that's how much they enjoy their time together. We also have our programming for adults with disabilities. We are part of a five-school district consortium that come together to provide opportunities for adults with disabilities to learn together, to explore together, and have social-emotional support. It also provides support for any, any of the adults in our community who may have disabilities to participate in any of our other community education programs. So that's our enrichment umbrella. Sorry. Adult Basic Education. So Adult Basic Education is a state and federal-funded program that provides free education for adults in our community who are looking to either learn English, develop their English skills further, looking for career advancement opportunities, or to get their GED. Also provides opportunities for family literacy. We have a hybrid program between Adult Basic Education and ECFE, where again, they may be learning with their young children with a licensed parent educator, but when they, I'm sorry, licensed early childhood educator, but with the parent educator, they're learning English skills. And then also, our digital literacy is embedded throughout all of our curriculum for any of our adult basic education programs. Now, again, people come here for career advancement or learning their skills. But another big thing, the reason that they come here is that I want to gain these skills to help my child with their homework help. Or I want to, I want to learn these skills to better understand the school system and how do I navigate it so that I can know, I'm confident to go to conferences or to have the digital skills to help my children when they bring a new iPad home, and I don't know what this is. So incredibly valuable program. And we're very strong, and we're actually growing at a higher rate than the state average as well.
Steve, wasn't one of your adult basic educators, didn't they win an inclusion award one year or two, just based on the services that they provide?
Yeah.
I think so. Yeah. It was, it was awesome. Thanks.
Just fantastic. If you ever want to sit in, I highly encourage it. I learned a lot. And we also bring in lots of speakers from the community, too, is, you know, the fire chief, or one of the fire inspector comes on in, Schmidian Sons comes on in. Again, helping people to learn, how do I navigate the systems in front of me?
Right.
From, from my understanding, this is a break-even program, correct? I mean, you get, there's a separate fund category. It is designed not to, using air quotes here, make, make a profit, but to fund all the expenditures that might be warranted to, to keep this operational. So I guess if that's the case, like.
I just want to correct the record. It's not break-even.
It's not a break-even program?
No, we're, we're operating at a deficit.
We are?
Yeah.
Okay. By, by like, a lot? Like millions or like, when you say deficit, this?
Not, not by millions. I, I don't have a number in my head. Bill might have a better number than I do right now. I just want to be clear that it's, we're not breaking even.
Because I knew we were in the negatives during COVID, and then there was a path to get back to some kind of balance and, and your fund balance at the community ed level.
It depends on if you're talking about department level or a program level.
Like whole, the whole community ed program, department slash general.
So department-wise, better. Program-wise, not. So, yeah.
So specific answer is, okay, as a department, we'll, we'll hit finances just in a little bit, too, is that by state statute, all of community education has to be in a separate fund. The simple reason for that is that the state says, we're going to give you money for early childhood screening, or we're going to give you money for preschool scholarships. Guess what? They want it spent on screening and scholarships. They say, you got to keep this money over here. So that's Fund Four. That encompasses all 16 of these program areas and services. Now, each one of those operates in their own essentially market. And so you have to understand that market, the customers, and what those demands are, and what people are willing to either spend their time or money on to attract them. Now, Adult Basic Education in and of itself, we do subsidize from the general department. We do get a lot of funding from the state and a little bit from the federal level. But that, we are able to take some funding we generate in other parts of the community ed department to subsidize Adult Basic Education.
I guess what I'm trying to, I'm heading towards where if it's designed not to make a profit, and we're only servicing 15% of our, our early childhood, you know, kids, like, I would assume there would be some participants or family members that would be willing to pay a premium or so, so that they could get in. I mean, what is preventing? Is it, is it the building? Is that really what it is? We don't have a building for these additional kids?
It, okay, so it does depend on the program. So we use Adult Basic Education as an example. By state statute, we cannot charge for it. Period. And now, switch over to a hybrid model, ECFE, Early Childhood Family Ed. By statute, we have a sliding fee scale. And so we do receive other funding to help support that sliding fee scale based upon the household income. So that's a hybrid model. And then you go to, let's say, a Small Wonders Preschool, that is primarily a fee-based program with some slots being purchased by the funding we get through school readiness or early childhood special education. But that is primarily, primarily a fee-based program. So again, it depends on your, on the program area. You have to understand all 16 of those to be able to put together essentially the department budget and essentially balance that.
So what that means is for special education students, the parents aren't paying the fee for them to participate in that program?
Got it. And so if we have more students, you know, if we have students, or I'm sorry, if kids participate, they would have, they would have to offset the cost of those that are not paying, and, and those that are on the scaling sides, scale as well, sliding scale as well.
Again, it depends on the program, how that all works. Yeah.
And you couldn't add the cost of the building on top of that dollar amount?
Sometimes we do, because, for example, in early childhood special, I'm sorry, early childhood umbrella, we do help contribute to the utilities from the district from those different programs. No, but we can't pay for a building ourselves.
Got it.
Can't pay capital expenditures. That's actually spelled out in statute. But we can help contribute to some of those operational aspects.
And as, and as I stated before, like, we're missing out on opportunities to serve more students and to get funding for those through like VPK because we don't have the space to do it.
But, but it's a $50 million investment. We, I mean, that's the cost of Hyview. I mean, if you built another, you know, you know, Crystal Lake, then that's roughly.
It's an investment, but then again, you have students that are leaving the district. And then you have research that shows that students that participate in early childhood education have better outcomes in the long run than students that don't. And particularly for students with disabilities, if they receive those early childhood services, their outcomes increase exponentially from that early intervention service versus not having it at all. Honestly, it was one of the reasons that I moved from Arizona with my family because we only had like two days a week for two and a half hours of early intervention. And I knew if I moved to Iowa, for example, which is where we moved at the time, I could get preschool every single day for four hours. And for a kid with autism, that's the difference between graduating from high school and being independent or, you know, being in a career where you're just, you know, doing repetitive, repetitive skills. You know, it's just, for, for a lot of these students, it's the difference between, you know, it's the outcomes. That's what we're looking at. And what are you willing to price that at?
Director Cameron.
I was just going to make a recommendation, Chair Swanson and others. I'm wondering if we can get through the whole presentation. Write down questions if you have them, because you might get to some of these. And that might alleviate just the confusion at times with questions, and also you may answer some while you're going through. That's just a recommendation that I would have.
At your pleasure. One note I will make is that a lot of districts also view this as that if they can attract a student or a family at the early childhood level, then they. at the early childhood level, then they have additional funding from K through 12 for that student for the rest of the time. That is part of the return investment that some districts do consider as well. All right. Skip away ahead. And I'm going further ahead now.
Here we are, questions?
Yeah, question. Okay, someone's got to stop me here or if someone can reverse, there we go. Two more, one more. Thank you. All right. You're gonna, I'm gonna try not to use the word embrawl only one more at a time. All right. Facility use is a service that is currently part of the Community Education Department. Again, you think the lighted schoolhouse concept. Uh, we are trying to make maximum use of our, the tax fund, uh, taxpayer-funded facilities. Open them up on before school, after school, evenings, weekends, summer to, again, maximize that use for, to serve the district's uh, educational needs. We have a team that not only helps with scheduling and kind of managing facility use, not only for our district-sponsored activities, but also our non-district or community activities. They also do a lot of logistics planning or event preparation as well as staff support. You know, if you're using the theater, you need to have some technical expertise there to help you use that theater. Swimming pool, you gotta have some lifeguards, you know, a lot of variety of different things that they help surround our community groups and make sure that their events are successful. Um, you know, again, they're operating evenings, weekends, non-school days, et cetera. So overall impact, 16 different program areas or programs, activities and services. Over 25,000 registrations. Again, some of those are duplicate because people like us and come back. And over 192, I'm not gonna go back, I'm gonna mess that up. But 192,000 hours of estimated indoor facility use last year. What I skipped over in the previous slide is that's actually, I think, a 7.6% increase over the previous year. Just when you think our facilities are busy and full and can't get any more full. Well, we take the policy to heart, the school district policy that says the school board encourages maximum use of school district facilities. We're living that. So 25,000, uh, registrations, 192,000 estimated hours of facility use. So, so what? People are coming here, maybe they have a lousy experience, maybe they don't want to come back. Now, fortunately, that's not the case. Again, Morris Leatherman, uh, 2022, the last time they actually measured this for our district, asked two questions for community education is, what's your approval rating of community education? Overall, communities said 91% approve. Of those parents, 95% approve. That's great, but what I find exceptional about this is that's out of everybody regardless if they participated in the past two years or not. So I asked Bill Morris, said, help me make sense of this. And he said, that's because even if they're not currently using you or community education, they know that it has a positive reputation, it's around, and they know where you are in case you, they do have any needs. So I take that as, take that to heart. When it does talk about actual participation, overall 44% of the overall community said that they are a member of the household and participate in the past two years and 68% than if you ask just parents. And again, then I asked Peter Leatherman, said, what does this mean comparatively? He said, that's one of the highest rates in the state. So, over time, uh, what does this mean for a growth or expansion? So I want to orient you to this graph just a little bit. So there's four sections of this graph and they're by season. The one, the farthest left is summer, then fall, winter, spring, because it's better to measure season versus season versus then throughout the year because they're different. Going from bottom to top are age groups. So the first one's early childhood, then K5, 6, 8, 9, 12, and adult and seniors. And this is for the past 10 years going across of contact hours. This isn't participation, this is contact hours, about how many times of these, how many hours people spent in our activities, programs and services. So you can see a strong upward trend over time. You can also see where COVID or pandemic hit us. And then you can also see a very strong rebound to the point where we are either at pre-pandemic levels or far above pre-pandemic levels. Financial history. So, again, I want to orient you to the graph. This is the past 20 years of our financial performance ever since I've been here. So each set, um, indicates a year. The blue bar is our revenue, red bar is our expense, and the yellow bar is our net resulting fund balance. Um, again, strong, steady performance and increase overall. You can see our fund balance was going up at a very steady amount and to a point where we thought this was a good amount. Fortunately, we had it when the pandemic hit because it not only benefited community education, but it benefited the entire district. Uh, as you mentioned, we took a big hit during that time. Our fund balance was negative. And since then, you can also see the even stronger rebound for revenues and resulting expenses. But then also our fund balance making progress and now it just, you know, reached the, um, positive market and it's going to be positive from here on out.
Going back to Brian's question, I guess, so I, I mean, this does appear to show net neutral or a little gain here. Are we missing certain expenses?
No, I was, I was saying program, not programmatically, across community ed, yes.
Okay.
Programmatically, there are some where we are not. And I, I was under the impression we were talking about facility use in
Oh, yeah.
that, that particular program.
Yeah. Three things that we end up subsidizing specifically is, I shouldn't say subsidizing. We spend additional money on is that we do have chargebacks from the general district that we are contributing about 177,000 per year. We also subsidize the facility use service to the community. Again, it is part of our overall philosophy, again, to use the facilities for the betterment of the community. So we do subsidize that for almost a hundred thousand dollars for the year. Again, that comes from other community education programs. And then, um, you know, there are specific programs that we also do, um, end up subsidizing for the overall greater good of, of the community, including Adult Basic Education to a tune of, I want to say like $25,000. All right. Wrapping up here, getting pretty close here. Who helps us do this? And we have to earn that $10 million every single year. That means that we need to have good value from our, from our, sensed from our community every single time that they choose to register or spend time in our programs. And so we need to stay in touch with our community. We all try to do that within our department, but we also have two advisory councils who help us with that tasks. Uh, we have an Early Childhood Family Education Advisory Council that Molly works with. And then I work with the General Community Education Advisory Council. So we have our members there and liaisons throughout the community and district. Uh, they set the topics they'd like to talk about, or I propose topics that would be helpful for the department. And here's some of the topics that we discussed this past year. So great appreciation to them because they are sounding bar board, can help keep us on track. So just like the rest of the district, our frontline staff are absolutely awesome. They make this all happen. I wanted to take this time to recognize our ECFE and ABE teachers, our Small Wonders instructors, our Kids Own Wonder Zone, Summer Adventures instructors, all of our LEF staff, all of our casual staff. And forgive me, I know I've missed a few too, but they're the ones who are making this happen. So appreciate that and want to get that first and foremost. I do have a number of program managers and leaders here that are also very important to making this happen. Again, Molly Dexter, Early Childhood, um, Education Director. Amy Gigliardi, who's our Small Wonders Supervisor. Shirley Ward is our Extended School Services Manager. Amanda Cambroon or Kettle Hut is our Enrichment Marketing Manager. Clarice Grabow is our ABE or Adult Basic Education Manager. And then Devin Reyes is our, is our Facility Use and Systems Manager. So I've chatted a lot up here, so thank you for your, your patience and consideration. Uh, for anybody that's interested in learning more, we have our phone number, our website, our email. Or anybody that, that's watching online, you can scan the QR code to go to our website as well. So with that, thank you for your time and I'd be pleased to stand for any questions.
Director Baker.
I just have a shout out. Um, your, your team is amazing and the things that they try to coordinate. It, it touches like every building within the district. And they've come in and, and saved the day. I don't know how many different times when I've seen them out in the district. And I want to say the most recent event that I attended where I saw like just superhuman type things going on was when they had a last minute ask, um, from, uh, Angie Craig. And they were having a, a, a thing at the high school. And there were also like three or four or five other tournaments going on. And there were people going every single direction and I'm seeing your people run all around. And it was like a well-oiled machine, whereas I'm sitting here going, oh my gosh, I can't imagine how they're keeping all of this straight. Cause it, I mean, it was just, um, even for the people that were waiting to get into the different events. They're like, okay, which direction do I go? And your team just had everything worked out and it was, um, absolutely amazing. I, I mean, they've stepped in so many different times when, um, I've just heard from community members as well, when things are going well. Um, I hear lots of things about the early childhood programming. I'm gonna hear Molly's name a lot and her team and staff and things that are going on over there. It's just absolutely amazing the things that, um, that everyone is doing. And then you have like an event where you're renting a building in the middle of the summer during Panaprag and oops, the air turns off at four o'clock and you make a call. I'm like, you're a school board member? What can you do? I'm like, I don't know. Let me make a call and see if we can figure something out. And then miraculously the air turns on when it's like 95 outside. So it was, it was very helpful in that moment. And, but then you're thinking about it, that's after hours for someone, right? And they're still answering calls and doing things, um, when we have events like that going on within our community. So kudos to you and your staff.
Thank you. I'll be sure to pass that along. And I should note that I think we also have a facility use, uh, presentation planned for the future as well to kind of do a little bit deeper dive as well.
Director Thompson.
Yeah, I, I did want to get clarification because I saw facilities used there. And I know that we were charging, uh, folks or external community members, uh, and organizations to use our facilities. So does that, does that revenue stick within that, that fund? Or do we, is that the only one that goes out to the general fund?
Fantastic question and I miss saying that. And so I really do appreciate you bringing that up. So the overall, I'm gonna make this brief again, for whatever future presentation. For anything that's charged for facility use, the only thing community education keeps is that application fee. And the application fee for a total for the year only adds up to six or $7,000. All rent goes to the general fund. All rent goes to the general fund to help offset utility costs, custodial costs, supervision costs, all those things. And, and Bill can chime in here too. Sometimes there are fees for specific staff. Let's say you have custodial overtime for coming in on a Sunday or extra cleanup for large events. That goes to help offset that cost for those additional staff members or technical members for like an auditorium or so. But the only thing that comes to community education is that application fee. And that's why when I say that we are generating a hundred, about a hundred thousand dollars in other community education programs just to help provide the service to the community. That's what I mean because that 7,000 doesn't cover, you know, what we're, um, using.
Director Thompson.
From a organizational chart perspective, I, I just, I'm curious because I, I am in favor of community education programs, but I also know, I'm also in favor of, you know, the basketball courts being used by our athletic teams and so forth. So because it sits within community education, do you run into scenarios where like, we've got an early education here? You can't have practice. You can't use these fields, X, Y, Z. I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand the logic. Oh, your, your prioritization, like is, is, are your programs come first and they override everything else?
Yeah. And so, um, they say two things is that we're tied everywhere. Just like you're talking about the elementaries, the high schools, you know, we're tied across the district and getting tighter with more students, more activities, more programs, more services. Even at the high school level, those activities and program services are expanding as well. So it gets to be more difficult every year to tweak out the extra little space. So that's what, again, we take it to heart for what it says maximizing district facilities. And so, yes, anything that is district sponsored, including community education, gets that top priority. So essentially it's the school itself and then anything that's district wide goes in first and then we go to the community groups. And again, uh, Devin will probably be here, provide much more detail for that. However, it's an art and a science together just to say, how can we make this work the best overall? So community education certainly doesn't get everything it wants or desires because there's just not enough good to go around. The X, Y, Z association doesn't get everything that they want because there's not enough to go around. So we do try and find a, a good balance and if there's a way that we can work together to even maximize individual spaces. So I'm not sure.
Devin is amazing at handling all that too. Absolutely awesome.
I, I appreciate that answer. And, and again, I, I definitely agree. There's probably an art and a science to this because we want to give our community members these additional programs at, at the most cost effective that, that we can. But on the flip side, we also want to selfishly try to make some revenue to offset some of our budget cuts that we've got as well, which is one of the reasons that we increased our user fees two years ago. And, and so hopefully when we get the facility fees updates coming up soon, I would be curious to know like, are our user fees comparable to other districts or other communities? And, or are we still below? Because I believe the last time we approved it, it was like, are we sure we want to do this? But it was still, I think at the time, lower than what other communities were charging anyways. So there's missed opportunities from what I see. That's all.
I'll give you that as an episode cliffhanger for the next presentation.
Last call for questions?
I think one of the issues with that, Director Thompson too, is the fact that Lakeville doesn't have a community center. So like our community relies upon our schools to provide that space because we don't have a community center space.
All right, 8:30. We can, we can do this. So no, I have heard a lot from other community members of the interest in additional programs or services or opportunities that we just don't have in our, our district simply because we don't have either overall space or, um, specific space. And so that is an ongoing issue and whether it's a field house or a community center or just, you know, more spaces for adult education, there, there's a lot of needs. And I'm hearing from the community as well of just how do you, again, serve the community and all their needs? It's, um, as, as you hear with any type of finances or, or, or teachers, we're trying to make the absolute best of everything we have uh, to go as far as we can.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, why don't we take, take five minutes? Mr. Holmgren.
Chair Swanson, member of the school board, Superintendent Bowman. Tonight, I really am going to try to do a brief, quick update overview of our budget and how it's performing in the year that we're in. So we're going to start out, we always talk about the object level where we look at salaries, benefits, and so forth. What I want you to look at first is the employee benefit area. Every time when we budget for the year, when we look at, when we have teachers that we haven't hired yet, we always assume they're going to take that family policy because that's our most expensive policy. What we found this year, we have quite a few that haven't taken the family. It's come in a little less. The other piece that we budget in benefits is assuming everybody's going to take advantage of our deferred comp program. Well, not everybody does that. So that's, we're seeing some savings here from previous years. I guess what I should say, the blue bars, of course, the year that we're in, the other two bars are previous years, but we look at a percentage of what was spent to date against. First, the first two bars are actual, are actual at the end of the year, are total costs, whereas now the blue bars against the budget. Moving over to supplies, a big piece of the supplies is our curriculum purchasing. And at this point in the year, we've only spent about 50% of our curriculum budget and that's what you're seeing here as a savings. What we'll probably see is setting some of these funds aside for the next year and knowing that they are going to buy these curriculum eventually. We talked about this earlier when we talked about our capital expenditures. Earlier in the year, we wanted to make sure we didn't have any arbitrage liability. So we spent most of our LTFM funds out of Fund VI first and now we're doing Fund I. So that's why it's behind from last year. So that will catch up. It's not going to be a savings when we get to the end of the year because it's all LTF funding. Other expenditures, one thing to remember here, this is a very small component of our budget. So when we look at a bar that looks, you know, the percent higher was only about $20,000. And there we're down on paying for some memberships. That's all that is, a very small amount. When we switch over to the program area, a couple of things to point out. First of all, in our district support, really what this is, something that's running higher than we've had in other years is our attorney fees. They are very high this year, much higher than we've had in other years. And that's what we're seeing here. Special education, again, a lot of positions that were hired later in the year and we still have some that are actually open. And that's what we're seeing here is some savings, not necessarily savings we should have, but there are some savings. This here, you see a zero in the second prior year. This is the new unemployment insurance payments where we didn't have any when we looked at two years ago. But this year, yeah, it's right back up there. We're going to spend almost up to about $800,000. But again, at this point in time, this is totally reimbursed by the state of Minnesota. So nothing to be concerned of here. When we see the buildings and grounds savings, this is again, that same thing where we're using the Fund VI LTFM funds before Fund I. So that's the arbitrage that we're trying to avoid, which we did, by the way. We hit the date and we're under and we're great. We're in good shape.
No removal.
That's no removal. We're actually a little under for the year, but of course, a lot more than last year.
It's still snow.
It could still do. It's only May, right?
Oh, no.
Here, just a reminder, what we're expecting to happen by the end of the year, we're actually expecting almost about a 2.5% increase in our fund balance. So very pleased with that and this rule is still on track to get that. So that's my update for tonight. Are there any questions?
There are no questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, you got a question?
No.
Are you sure? All right. Superintendent Bowman?
You might be Paul.
No, I think we missed the window already. So Chair Swanson and members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, what you just heard Bill say, we have to remember one key planning factor that is accounted for in that budget and that is it assumes as a planning assumption a renewal on the operating and the capital levy for the future. So I want to make sure that we all understand what's in the operating levy and in the capital projects levy and just go over that one more time with the board. As you know, the omnibus education bill is still in discussions with the legislature. So all the planning assumptions we made for the fiscal year '26 budget and just so you know, we're also looking at fiscal year '27. So we're not just in this current fiscal year. So as we talk about our renewal, our renewal is predicated on understanding the '26 and '27 budget relationship. And what the omnibus education bill that is still in discussions with the legislature, they will go into special session, that can have some impact on our operating and capital levy situation. So I just want to go over the operating levy. It's a renewal. The levy expires at the end of June of '26. So it would take effect again if it's renewed in fiscal year '27. It's $1.7 million. Elementary art programming, fifth grade band programming, and current high school classes, 14.2 full-time positions is what that services in our system currently in our general fund. So I just want to make sure all those things are clear to everybody. You have the opportunity to renew this particular portion of the levy under a one-time opportunity based on a statute and that's Minnesota Statute 126(c) dot 1.7 subdivision 9(b). And that allows the school board to vote for that. And I just want to just make sure that that's articulated clearly. Are there any further questions about the operating levy in particular? Okay, let's move on to the capital projects levy, which is another component of this levy renewal. And if this is renewed, the capital projects levy will generate $4 million annually for the next 10 years. Next, oh, I got the, there we go. I'm used to just saying next chart and I didn't even say that. No tax rate increase, I think is fundamentally important to understand about the capital projects levy. What we use the funds for is career pathways opportunities, including our K-12 STEM programming. You heard a little bit about that with the high school updates and the work we've been doing there. Cybersecurity and our managed response systems, key and essential. And these came online when we were able to pass this levy back in 2015. So we've been building those out. Security equipment, access control, and improvements in our overall security stance in the district with capital. And that means physical security support, educational technology devices and the infrastructure to support them. And then 5.5 full-time positions that support that technology and security support across the school system. So that's what those funds were used for in 2015 and we would like to be able to sustain into the future. So that is the capital projects levy renewal. There is in the omnibus education bill, a provision that would also allow the school board on a one-time renewal to vote for that. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. I have not heard and maybe a board member knows if they have picked a date for a special session. I think the tactic or the process they're going through is they want to get the agreement before they have the session. And I understand there's just a lot of conversation going. We did have invited Senator Duckworth and Representative Witty to come on the 10th of June to do a little Q and A or report out to the community here on what's going on with the legislative session. My hope is that they'll come in and say, it's done. And here's the good things and here's the not so good things. But we'll see how that plays out. Questions about the capital projects renewal?
Can you remind me what the cost is, the annual cost, average household in Lakeville on these two?
I'll have to ask Bill for that number.
I know it's been conveyed, but I just don't remember what it was.
Median home, Bill.
Was it 124 for the year?
147 is what's in my head, but I don't know if I can confirm that with the actual Ellers calculation.
For both levies?
No, that's for the capital. I want to say the operating was, was it 64, 60, something like that?
That makes sense, roughly half, a little less than half. So less than 200 bucks a year.
The capital project is a 138.
138, okay.
Okay. Director Cameron?
Superintendent Bowman, I'm wondering if for the June 10th, I think you said, event, might you consider inviting other representatives from our school district? So for example, I'm not represented by either of those people you just mentioned, but Senator Port and Representative Berg and Senator Port also has students in our district. So I'm just thinking, could we have all elected representatives?
Well, we can certainly reach out. We'll ask.
Yeah, I'm happy to ask too because they're my representatives if you want.
Sure, if you could work with Kim, we could get that. Thank you.
Director Thompson?
So I am appreciative of all the information that we've gotten over the past couple of months about the operating levy, the 1.7. And again, that's roughly $17 million in the course of the next 10 years that our community members would continue to pay in taxes. I'm having a tough time on this one. And again, this goes back to what we had to do two years ago. Was it two years ago where we had to approve, what was it, a $3 million operating levy as well? I believe that as a school board member, I should do my best to manage and govern, let me rephrase that, govern the funds that are approved by the community. I'm not 100% aligned on approving the choice for the community to renew this. And so that is $17 million for 10 more years. And I may not even be on the board for 10 more years. And so I share this now because with the June 15th coming up, the conversation that we just had about high school, there is a lot of needs for our community and our schools as a whole. I mean, flexible scheduling, massive opportunity, having a fourth counselor in each high school, massive opportunity, you know, and then an assistant principal for pathways. And there might be more. And maybe it might be too late in the game to have these conversations, but if we are giving our community members the choice, because it's their money, it's not mine. And I'll have a choice when I get to go vote on that if this goes out to the ballot. But I am in favor of making sure that we do a good job governing money, not taking money. And I get that this is a renewal, but this is for a renewal. When you look at the survey from Morris Leatherman, the people that are here in our community weren't here 10 years ago. And while, and I think it was like 33% or so have been here less than 10 years. And they probably weren't here when they passed this levy. And so I would assume that those folks would be in favor of art and band and lower class sizes in high school. And I have confidence that the community would have high favorability in that, but it's also their choice too. And so I guess my question is, are we open, is anyone open to thinking about, you know, adding more than just the 1.7 million? Or is it too late in the game and we don't want to do that? So I'll throw it out there.
I mean, I'd be concerned tonight because you'd have to revoke and then add a new, I mean, it'd be a new levy. So I think we'd run.
I don't think, we wouldn't revoke. We just wouldn't renew it.
Yes, you have to revoke.
We'd have to revoke it.
Yes, that's the requirement. I hear exactly what you're saying. I think that's a future opportunity and that we should explore what the priorities are with a future opportunity and develop that in concert with our community to get to the right place for the future. A renewal, this has history going back to 2008 where a lot of these things were cut from a budget cut that occurred way back then. I think the first most important thing you can do is not have to cut the budget. And if you can get to that place, then the conversations around what could we ask our community to support in a defined priority is a trajectory that will get, I think, where you want to go, sir.
I mean, I get what you're saying in principle and it's hard to disagree with, right? But we also do have the legal option, at least on one of these and possibly two of these if our elected officials that this, you know, our constituents elected. I mean, I think Duckworth was actually the sponsored one of the Senate bill that allows us to renew the capital levy. So. So, yeah, I guess my concern is what happens to our budget if these don't get renewed, you know? And then what opportunities are we going to miss out on, you know, for the students? And then there's also the part of me that, you know, we being the only, like, government entity that has to go and ask the public for a tax increase, you know, which makes it a more challenge. Oh, sorry. Director Cameron?
Director Thompson, I appreciate your perspective and noting that, like, there's many needs, and there's definitely need for more money. I mean, there's no question, right? I think for myself, I'd be leery of this particular year, just given what's happening with the economy. And with these options to potentially renew both, while I understand what you're saying that people, you know, that people typically have had the option to vote on these, they have voted for us, right? So it is still, we are representing our community by our decisions at this table on whatever issue, but in particular this one. So I think, while it's not a direct vote, I think it's still related to what the community would want.
Yeah, I do worry too. Was it Farmington last cycle? That tried to revoke and go for more? And it failed, and then they resulted in a number of cuts, so. But again, yeah, I mean, in principle, I agree with what you're saying. Any other questions for Superintendent Bowman?
Well, no questions for you, but for you, are you, what's the timeline for this? Are you envisioning June 14th we're voting? Are you envisioning June 1st, or?
My intent was to bring a recommendation to the board for action on June 10th, because 15th, we turn into a pumpkin.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, theoretically, if they're still in session, and it looks like there could be something, could we call a special meeting on the 14th?
But technically, we could vote on one already.
We could. Mm-hmm. Yeah. We're just trying to leave ourselves the opportunity, you know, the option, but.
We can vote on one and wait on the other, is what I'm saying.
Correct. But I think if we don't vote, at least to send the second one to the ballot by the 15th, then it's dead. So we have to take action on both of them by the 15th.
Okay.
Thank you, Board.
Sixty, we're going to add or jump into the discussion on additional committees, which was requested by Director Baker, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. I requested this to be added to the agenda because I've had meetings with various community, people within the community and within our school district, just requesting engagement with the board, kind of like we did last year, and we had a committee that planned some of those engagements, just to make sure that the board was out in front of people. I think all of us that were at the Chamber of Commerce event this past week, there were lots of positive feedback from that, just people having the opportunity to talk with the board, to ask questions. It was just a, it was a great opportunity for us to be out in front of the public and something different, where we can have a back-and-forth conversation, where it's not just public comment. So my request to add this was because I wanted to ask if we could bring back the Public Engagement Committee, and if anybody would like to join me on that committee. So, open for discussion on that.
Director Anderson?
I'll hop back on that committee with you.
All right, I think we've got two. Director Carbone?
Yeah, it sounds like we've got a committee, and I, let's.
Yeah. You'd mentioned that you've heard from different groups that would like us to stop by and chat with them.
A couple different student groups that I've met with. I also met with one of our cultural liaisons recently. And last year, we had, at least the committee that, there were three board members on that. It was Director Anderson and Director Lind and myself. And we had been working with teachers to try to bring, like, some type of public engage or board engagement with teachers within our district, just to hear from them and their daily experiences, and just kind of have some back-and-forth conversation. So I, that's, those are tall asks for one board member to work on, so that's why I was hoping that we could bring back that engagement committee, so that we could plan some of those events and work them into our schedule, because it's important.
Are you willing to chair that committee?
Sure, I'll chair it.
All right. Director Thompson?
I was gonna say, I support that idea, and know that who's ever on the committee, that the rest of the board will support, you know, engagement, obviously. You assign us what to do.
Okay. All right, so I guess it's you and I, Carly.
Director Thompson?
Yeah.
Brian!
I'll nominate Director Nicholson. And he said yes. And so, he's here. So if we're going to make this into a committee, I believe the ideal process would be to pass a resolution, so that we've got reasonable guardrails of the intent or non-intent, because I don't think a resolution was passed when, if we're going to establish an official school board committee. Or if this is something that you and Carly want to just go do, I mean, I'm not saying that we don't need a resolution. Well, let me rephrase that. What's the appropriate process to form a committee on the school board? Because we did that for the policy committee. We didn't want, we elected not to pass a finance committee, HR committee, negotiations committee, and I believe the engagement committee passed, or didn't pass as well. So I don't want to hinder it, but I'm just, I'm just making sure.
We just didn't have anything at the time where we felt that we needed to pursue the Public Engagement Committee at that point, because we had a bunch of new members and we had new learning to do. And it was, would it be a tall ask for new board members to start that right away? Legally, the board can start any ad hoc committee at any time without a resolution that's, you know, you don't need it. But I think part of the committee work could be defining that purpose and then identifying what our goals are for that. But again, that would be based on, like, our goals as a board, and we haven't established those yet. So I don't really feel like I could make a resolution at this time. So I would vote that we just do the ad hoc, because we haven't established our own goals, so it's kind of hard for us to say that each committee should have a resolution and have goals that would match our goals that we don't have.
Well, and I think he means you're just trying to limit the scope and say, "Well, what are you going to do?" Right? So I think public engagement might be a little easier to define or limit.
Correct.
And then if we see you guys going rogue, we can cancel it, so.
You won't know, because you won't be there.
So.
Make sure you keep minutes.
And I don't mean to push back even more so, but if it's public engagement and you want to go speak with, if a board member wants to speak with any constituent, they can do that. And it, but not, can you repeat that?
So this would be public engagement for our board?
Oh, of three individuals?
No.
It would be of the board. So those have to be set up through the committee, because otherwise you have a quorum of the board that would be present. So it would need to go through a committee to do that. And any individual board member can reach out to community members or constituents of any kind and talk to them at any level. But then we also have to look at, like, you know, sometimes it's harder to reach some of those specific groups, and it gives us at least an avenue to talk with not only teachers and students and community members, but groups that are meeting within our district and understanding what their, their goals are. Because that should also drive, like, what we do as a board.
So you're just going to be, you're going to be thinking of ideas to send, you know, a non-quorum group of the board members?
Yeah. So the process that we used last time was that we met as a committee, we talked with different groups, we set up, or we kind of came together with an idea, and every time we had, like, an engagement session, we would bring it back to the board. This is a group that wants to meet with us, this is what they want to talk about, is the board open to pursuing this? People said yes or no, and then we would set up the event. So it's not like there's anything rogue going on. It all comes back through the board, so.
No, no, and I did not envision or expect anything rogue. I just want to be mindful of the process, where if it is going to be a board committee, then, just like the policy committee, we have to have an open meeting law if two of the three board members are there.
Correct.
So if you're, if we're going to have conversations with other constituents or other groups or whatever it may be, that has to be listed. And so is that the path we want to go? Or when we say ad hoc, you're just going to meet with them and then you report when you report?
Even, but we were ad hoc last time, and even so, we still, we still sent all of our meeting dates to Kim and set those up as open meeting laws, so that anyone could attend that needed to. So, and that would be the same thing that we would, that we would pursue, with our main goal being setting up public engagement sessions for the board to interact with the community.
Which, that wouldn't have to be open, if there's only three of us.
There's only two right now.
So the actual committee meeting would have to be open, but if we then schedule events, if there are events that three board members are attending, that wouldn't have to be open, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we need to make a motion?
But it is designed for the board to attend. So I think we try to be mindful about, like, Tuesday nights, given that we generally meet on Tuesdays. That was kind of a day, maybe, where we were more open as a board to do something. Or otherwise, it's just as people are available.
Well, if the full board, if four members of the board are there, it's an official meeting. And so someone can literally make a motion at that meeting and pass something.
Well, we can all put guardrails around what happens at these.
It's also a purposeful thing, which we have history of doing, where that has never occurred, because the purpose of the engagement committee is to set up public engagement, not board meetings, right? Like, it's not a board meeting, it's a public engagement session.
Well, and you just did it with the chamber. I know I wasn't able to attend, but the chamber was an example, right? Where, I think you listed it officially on the website, but.
But if we're not talking, if we're just going to engage and not necessarily talk about school district business, then it's not a meeting. But again, it depends, event to event, so.
It just has to be open to the board.
And how many people you have, so.
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
I think maybe Brian should be on the board, just, on the committee, just to make sure that it's processed correctly.
Director Nicholson just sent me an email earlier this morning, saying he wanted to be on it.
Okay. I don't think we need to vote on it, do we? It's a former committee?
Not for ad hoc committees, no.
Yeah. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, so we will follow up with Kim and make sure that we set up meetings and that those get on the calendar, so that people know when we are meeting.
All right. Board reports. I have one from, I have one from Director Nicholson, actually. No joke.
He said he wanted to be on it.
He wanted me to share it, because he wasn't going to be here. He attended the AP Stats Olympic event. He said, "Very cool setup and fun end-of-the-year activity. Kids appear to be having fun testing their hypothesis and gathering data. Katie and the staff did a great job, and it was fun to participate in the experiments with Principal Booty." And he said he hopes that the results get published somewhere to see, so. Do you want to share our?
You can share that one, but I was going to share a different one.
Okay, go ahead.
Speaking of engagement, and Superintendent Bowman, I saw you there too, but I attended Maguire's Culture Affair last, was it Friday? I can't, my days are so, okay, last Friday. And it was great, it was the first time they've ever done it, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to Kathy Nida, who's a school success liaison at Maguire, who coordinated the whole thing. When I attended, all the students were in the gym, having an assembly, experiencing different performances, but then on the walls in the hallway were student projects, comparing and contrasting different countries from around the world on a variety of things. There were cultural booths set up for students to engage with. And I know a lot of our liaisons worked at the event too, and so, yeah, it was great to attend, and a lot of energy there that day.
Director Cameron? Or, sorry. Anderson.
I'll be Amber today, too. I attended the Eastview Wax Museum, it's a 3rd grade event, and I love it. I've seen two of my kids go through it now, and it's such an awesome event, where basically every child chooses someone famous, someone that inspires them, and then they develop a whole story, or they research the person and develop a story, and then that's a script that they create, and they dress up like the person. And so it's just such a cool event to see these kids becoming alive as someone else, and just all the research they get to do, and seeing them kind of public speaking. So you go around and you press their button, and they churn into the person, and it's a pretty cool event. So just cheers to the Eastview staff. I don't know if any other elementaries do it, Lakeview does?
Sure, sure, if you does too.
Okay, so it's a great event.
All right, I'll share Amber, myself, Superintendent Bowman, Emily McDonald, Kim Booty, and there were, I think Michelle Humphrey was there as well, and some other staff members, all attended the DCD graduation on Friday, which was a really cool event. So I think we had four graduates. Yeah, so just something special to kick off our graduation season, and, yeah. Anyone else? All right, Superintendent Bowman?
Well, I was going to talk about almost all of those, but I won't talk about those. The one I had a lot of fun at was, I don't know if you know this, but 5th grade every year does a track and field event over at one of the high schools. This year was at Lakeville North. I don't know what happened, but perfect weather. I mean, it was just perfect. And to watch those kids run, I stayed for all the relays. They were losing their minds in the stands. It was a lot of fun. So that was, just wanted to share that, that event. Other than that, in the interest of time, I don't have anything else, and we got one more action item, I think.
Did you run a relay?
I would have run, but I probably should have waited for a high school event, because , of course, they're not even smoked, but that's all right.
Mr. Holmgren? Approval of the 917 LTFM plan?
It's another short one, really. Tonight, we're going to ask the board to approve the 26th LTFM levy for District 917. As you know, District 917 doesn't have any levy authority, so all their LTFM funds come through all the member districts. We all levy our proportionate share, and then we send it off to them to make their repairs for LTFM. Now, I put this in your packet too, so maybe you can see it a little better. It's a little small, but there is a small change from what I showed you a couple of weeks ago. We talked about LTFM when we had the facilities group here, and we talked about District 917. In the meantime, they had another meeting, they changed their mind a little bit. They have a large roof that they need to repair coming up in a couple of years, so they want to start putting some money aside now. Instead of hitting us all with a big bill in a couple of years, we'll split that out over four and five years. So if you look right in the middle of that, under Financial 383, you see a $250,000 mark. That wasn't there before. So you see the total now is a 421 for our pay 26 levy. And we look, and we go, and when we go forward, you can see that our share of this levy is at 86,944, with a total there of 422. These dollar amounts come from two different formulas. One is, looks at our adjusted pupil units, and the other looks at our net tax capacity. You can see that we're very close to, Bloomington, we're a little larger in size. You see our percentage in the first column, a little higher than Bloomington, but when you get to the net tax capacity, they're a little higher. Of course, they have a lot more commercial property in their district than we would have close to. So I asked the board to, there's also a resolution attached to your packet, and we need you to pass that resolution, and then that's just part of getting ready for the levy that you will certify in December. But this gets all the information to the MDE in the summer, so when September comes and we get these final numbers ready to go forward. Any questions on that?
Director Thompson?
Hey, Bill, how much is the overall roofing system replacement? 250,000 is, are we looking at?
Over five years.
Over five years.
So it's 1.2, it might be about $1.3 million.
Got it.
They don't have a hard quote, because it's down the road a little bit. So that's our best estimate at this time.
And so the original, I forgot, the original estimate was 400?
The original estimate was 158,000. So it is a change from what they had presented to me here a month ago.
So 158 to 421,000?
Yes.
So they, so they, Director Cameron?
I was gonna say, Director Baker, I know, this probably came from one of your board meetings, correct? Is there anything to add from your perspective on that board?
Just that we're trying to lessen the burden for the member districts and just putting it out over several years, instead of doing it all at once, which would, as Bill stated, be a larger ask. I guess, like, the thing that you have to remember is that we're splitting the cost with all of those districts that are, that are included there. And we do send quite a few students to that district, our most vulnerable population, as stated. And we still have students on a waiting list to go in there, so these are our students too. Like, these are students from Lakeville that are attending that district, so it's not, like, you know, different students, so, anyway.
Director Thompson? Director Thompson.
Have we historically only just offered, like, $250,000 a year towards LTFM? Is this the first year that we're actually seeing a 421, 100, a big jump? But it's also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'd say this is the first time we've had an amount larger than this. It's been more around 100, 150 for, you know, a long time.
And so then the next five years will more than likely be around this space, because they're going to add 250 to everything.
Yeah, so we'll see the same amount going forward, and that's the whole point. So a levy doesn't bounce around. We'll see this, you know, 86, 87,000 for the next five years from District 917.
And do we have enough funding in our LTFM? Because I know that that's a separate category.
Yeah, this is separate from our LTFM.
Okay.
It comes with a levy totally separate from ours. There'll be, there'll be a line, and you'll see that when we bring a levy forward, there'll be a line just for LTFM for District 917. And this is the number that'll be on it.
I will add that the district doesn't have many of their own buildings, like, they rent space within all of the districts, to try to cut back on that maintenance cost, because then, you know, you have issues like this, that you still have to maintain buildings. But we do have several classrooms that operate within our district that are 917 within, for example, there's one at Lakeville North High School. There's classrooms within other districts and other buildings. There, we actually, you know, they operate within DCTC College Campus, they rent space there. It's Concord, Alliance, and I'm trying to remember the other one. I think there's one more.
I'm not thinking of what it is.
Which one's getting the roof replacement?
It's the one they own, the only building that they actually own, because that's all they can use LTFM on.
Yeah, but do you know which one it is?
I do not remember.
I think it's Alliance, isn't it?
I think it is.
I think it's Alliance.
Do we approve this on an annual basis?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve? Second.
What's, there's a resolution at the end of the packet here. So just to be more exact, oh, go ahead.
The only thing that I'm thinking of, and again, this is already probably passed this, those negotiations, that we're paying 250 for the next five years for a roof that more than likely will last the next 20 or so. And, you know, I would assume most loans are 20 years, and just how do you lower that? But if there's no way to make those adjustments now, you know what I mean?
I would say, from their point of view, it doesn't pay to put on a less expensive roof, because then it won't last 20 years.
Agreed, but we're paying it all in five years versus a typical loan would maybe last 20, is what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, and in this case, we're levying it upfront, we're not taking out any debt to pay for it.
Adding that we made significant staff cuts to this district already this year.
I mean, they're funding the, yeah, the expense, which in all reality, will probably not be enough money to pay for it in five years, but, yeah.
Well, I'm sure they'll look at that on a yearly basis, and it needs to be adjusted a little bit, they will do that.
But setting aside the reserve now to pay for it.
Yeah, setting aside now, so we're not, you know, getting a hit of 150 instead of the 86.
Yeah. I mean, the reality is, even if we're leasing from a commercial property, we're paying for these kind of expenses anyways, because they factor them into the rent. All right, so I think the motion might have to be to approve the resolution attached to the board packet, if we're specific.
I have Director Anderson making the motion to pass the resolution, and then Director Cameron seconding that.
All right. There being a first and a second, motion to approve the resolution attached to the board packet, as drafted. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, it is approved.
Yep, thank you.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Director Cameron, all in favor?
Aye.